Hello.
We're going to get started, everybody. We can all settle down and begin the hearing. Thank you so much.
Hello. I am Paige Graves, MTA General Counsel. Seated at the table are the following members of MTA leadership. MTA CEO Chair Jan O'Leary, Chief External Relations John McCarthy, Board Member Andrew Albert, Board Member Norman Brown, Board Member Blanca Lopez, Board Member Midori Valdivia. Also at the table, Bridges and Tunnels President Catherine Sheridan and Chief Accessibility Officer Quamell Arroyo, as well as Deputy Chief External Relations Juliette Michelson. Joining via Zoom are Board Member David Jones, Bridge and Tunnels Chief Operating Officer Dr. Allison D. C. Di Soreno and Board Member Heda Mahaltes. Today's hearing officer is Lucille Songhai. Lucille, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening and welcome to the Central Business District Tolling Program Public Hearing. Today is Thursday, February 29th, and the time is 6:11 PM. My name is Lucille Songhai, and I will be today's hearing officer. This hearing is being livestreamed and recorded and will be available publicly on the MTA website and YouTube channel. By attending this virtual hearing, you consent to be recorded. Today, we are gathering public comment on the proposed toll rate schedule for the Central Business District Tolling Program. Comments are recorded for submission to the TBTA board. Responses will not be provided during this hearing. In addition, you will also notice that there is an open house happening directly outside the hearing room. In this space, we have information about the project, opportunities to sign up for the project mailing list, as well as MTA staff on hand to talk about MTA projects and REDUCE FAIR programs. Feel free to take a look at any point during the session. We will begin with a brief presentation on the proposed toll rate schedule for the Central Business District Tolling Program, and then we will hear from registered speakers. Juliette?
Hello. Good evening, everybody. I'm Juliette Michelson, Deputy Chief of Policy and External Relations here, and it's really lovely to see everybody. Let me start by thanking everyone for taking the time to be here, to stay informed about this program, and taking the time to share your thoughts with us today. I guess I'm doing this. Public comment has informed the congestion pricing program since the beginning. What you see on the screen is a list of the public hearings and the public meetings that the MTA and our project partners conducted a couple of years ago as we were going through the federal environmental approval process. It was that public input, plus the rigorous analysis that was conducted, that led the FHWA to determine in June 2023 that congestion pricing would improve regional air quality, tackle New York's severe congestion problem, and deliver critical capital funding for transit without adverse effects on the environment. So the next step of the process was to convene the Traffic Mobility Review Board to develop and make a recommendation to the MTA Board and the TBTA Board about toll rates, and also discounts and exemptions. Nope, back one. Okay. The TMRB held three public meetings in the summer and fall last year. Many of you were here. And ultimately, they issued this report outlining their proposal to the MTA Board. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to receive comments on that proposal. Before we get into the specifics of the proposal, I want to talk for a minute about the principles that were driving the TMRB. More than anything, and I think you heard Carl and others say this, the TMRB wanted a program that benefited the many, not the few. The many being first and foremost, transit users. The 85% of people commuting into the CBD who use transit. They'll benefit from congestion pricing, whether they're riding a bus or a paratransit vehicle that's stuck in traffic today and that will be able to move faster, or whether they ride the rails and depend on infrastructure that is always in need of investment. And for the very small minority of commuters who drive, I'm talking about 143,000 people out of 1.5 million people who work in the CBD. Even for them, the TMRB made it a priority to benefit the many, not the few. What do I mean by that? I mean granting a very limited number of discounts and exemptions, no picking favorites, everyone is treated the same. That helped to keep the toll low for everybody. And keeping the toll low also helps to avoid unnecessary traffic diversions, vehicles choosing to avoid the CBD and instead driving through other communities. That was another priority of the TMRB. Okay, so with that context, here is the toll structure that we're seeking comment on today. First, the toll rates. Passenger vehicles and small commercial vehicles, sedans, SUVs, pickup trucks, small vans, paying with an EZ Pass, would be charged $15 in the peak period and $3.75 at night when there's less congestion. Motorcycles would pay $7.50 during the day, $1.75 at night. Both autos and motorcycles would be charged no more than once a day. Trucks and buses would pay a toll of $24 or $36 during the day, depending on their size and function, and $6 or $9 at night. And finally, instead of a per-day toll, taxi and FHV customers would be charged a smaller amount on every trip made to, from, within, and through the CBD. For app-based four-hire-vehicle customers, that toll would be $2.50. For yellow taxi, green cab, and black car customers, it would be $1.25. The TMRB-- yeah, the TMRB and the MTA today are recommending a small reduction in the CBD toll, what we call a crossing credit, the vehicles using EZ Pass and entering directly into the CBD via one of the four-told entries, the Lincoln-Holland, Queens-Midtown, and Hugh Carey tunnels. The credit is proposed to be up to $5 for passenger vehicles, $2.50 for motorcycles, $12 for small trucks, and intercity charter buses, and $20 for large trucks and tour buses. Because the CBD toll would be reduced by 75% at night, no crossing credits would be offered at those times. As for exemptions and discounts, again, as I said earlier, the program includes very few. Some exemptions actually were already set in the law, emergency vehicles, vehicles carrying people with disabilities. Other exemptions are being proposed by the TMRB and the MTA today, namely transit and commuter buses, specialized government vehicles not intended for general transportation. There's also one proposed discount of 50% off the peak-period passenger-vehicle toll for low-income drivers after the first 10 trips in a calendar month. Customers will be able to apply for these discounts and exemptions after the toll rates have been officially approved by the MTA Board. I should say that there are other finer points to this toll structure that I haven't discussed here, or we would be here for much more time. There are sheets outside with the complete toll structure that you should refer to, and of course, they're also on our website. So in closing, let me say, you know, I think everybody here knows that excessive transit-- excessive traffic congestion has plagued this city for a long, long time. There's video out there. You'll see black-and-white footage of excessive traffic conditions in the 1930s. And the movement to reduce that congestion by charging drivers, good old supply and demand, is also decades old. In fact, I would say there are plenty of people in this room who have been working for the better part of two decades to address the crippling congestion that exists in Manhattan. The Traffic Mobility Act that the New York State Legislature passed in 2019 is the result of your work. And the toll rates that we're discussing today achieve the two main goals of that law. It will finally address gridlock. With the toll structure proposed, 100,000 fewer vehicles a day are expected to enter the CBD. Less gridlock means less time wasted in traffic, more economic productivity, faster buses, cleaner air, safer streets. And second, the revenue from congestion pricing is 100% dedicated to improving transit. More specifically, congestion pricing will pay for full ADA accessibility at more than 20 stations, the electrification of 11 bus depots, the purchase of 250 electric buses, modern signals on the BDFM, the AC line, giving 1.6 million riders more frequent and reliable service, the long-awaited extension of the Second Avenue subway into East Harlem, and many, many other projects that will significantly improve the commute of the 85% of people who commute to the CBD by transit. Thank you.
There are 190 speakers registered to speak today. In fairness to each speaker, comments are limited to two minutes. At the 1.5-minute mark, the clock will turn red, and there will be an audible beep indicating 30 seconds remaining. All registered speakers must adhere to the rules of decorum and conduct. Rules are posted inside of this hearing room and available on mta.info. For speakers on Zoom, when you are called on, there will be a brief transition on your screen before you will be able to unmute and enable your camera. You will not be able to unmute or enable your camera until it is your turn to speak. In the event you miss your name being called, we will call you again after all other speakers in attendance have been called. If you have joined the Zoom under a name that is different from the one you used when you signed up to speak, please identify yourself in the Q&amp;A function. You may also request to speak anonymously. If this is your preference, please indicate this in the Q&amp;A function, and you will receive further instructions. Those joining on Zoom can turn on cart captioning by using the CC button on the bottom of the screen. Sign language interpreters will appear on screen for all attendees. To hear the translated audio, use the interpretation button on the bottom of the screen. Please note that this live hearing is limited to a total of 120 speakers. Turnout tonight is high, and there may be extended wait times to speak. If you prefer to record your comment on video or in writing, there are members of the MTA Board and executive leadership ready to receive public comment in the lobby by the elevators. There are also comment cards and a live stenographer. Information about other ways to comment can be found on our website and in the chat function of the Zoom. Comments can be submitted through March 11, 2024. All comments carry the same weight, regardless of how they are submitted. All comments will be shared with the MTA Board. Please note that this is the first of four hearings on this topic. If you have spoken at a previous hearing, you will be given another speaking opportunity after all other registrants have had a chance to provide their comment. Once again, the purpose of this hearing is to comment on the proposed toll rate schedule for the Central Business District Tolling Program. The MTA officials present tonight will not be answering questions. They are here to listen. Once you have made your comment, we encourage you to circulate out of the hearing room so others have a chance to come in. We will be taking a brief five-minute break every hour to give everyone the opportunity to stretch and circulate. We will now begin the public comment portion of today's hearing. Our first speaker is Tiffany Ann Taylor, followed by Assembly Member Robert Carroll.
Good evening. My name is Tiffany Ann Taylor, and I'm the Vice President for Transportation at the Regional Plan Association, also known as RPA. The RPA is a longtime supporter of congestion pricing because we have always recognized the regional benefits to everyone: cleaner air, consistent and dedicated funding for public transit, and less congestion for those who choose to drive. While the system is large and operates 24 hours a day, seven days a week, substantial financial investments are still needed to keep it sustainable and accessible well into the future. Without this additional funding, many important projects are at risk: electric buses and upgrades to bus depots needed to improve air quality in environmental justice neighborhoods, new railcars for Long Island Railroad and Metro North, vital subway signal improvements that would benefit millions of riders, and upgrading elevator access at many subway stations across the city are threatened without this pivotal funding source for the MTA Capital Program. RPA supports the recommendations for congestion pricing as put forth by the TMRB and agree with the following: buses providing transit or commuter services to the CBD should be exempt; four-hire vehicles and taxis should be told on a per-trip basis so as to not place additional burden on drivers; other than those groups listed in the TMRB's recommendations, no other group should be exempted from the toll; trucks should be charged a toll according to their size; and while we appreciate the TMRB's recommendations for credits at various crossings, RPA advocates, to the extent possible, for equalized tolling at all crossings into the CBD to prevent toll shopping. As the program is implemented, we also advocate for data transparency and accessibility so that the public can understand the details of the program to better support future advocacy. The time has come for New York City to be the first in the nation to implement this policy. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Assembly Member Bobby Carroll, followed by Jackie Cohen.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here today. Let me first state that I am a strong supporter of congestion pricing, and I agree with most of the proposals that the TMRB has set forth for the MTA to review. However, I think there is one part where they have vastly underestimated the impact of four-hire vehicles in the Central Business District. There are over 80,000 four-hire vehicles entering the Central Business District almost every single day. There will be almost 80 million four-hire-vehicle trips that touch the Central Business District in 2024. A $2.50 per-trip fee is not enough to limit the impact of these vehicles. It is the height of luxury to take an Uber or Lyft from Tribeca to Midtown Manhattan, and it should be taxed as such. Those taxes should not be placed on the drivers, but they should be placed on the very, very wealthy patrons who are taking these vehicles. A fee of at least $5 would allow you to exempt yellow cabs, which have a firm cap of $13,500, and have been impacted tremendously by the exponential growth of four-hire vehicles. And so I would hope that you would accept the most of the proposals set forth by the TMRB, but that you would greatly increase the per-trip fee on all four-hire vehicles that touch the congestion zone. Thank you.
Please note that there are two microphones in the room, and so as I call your name, please make your way to the closest microphone so that we can keep things moving this evening. Our next speaker is Jackie Cohen, followed by Cara Girl.
Great. I can start. Okay. Hi. Good evening. My name is Jackie Cohen. I'm the Director of Climate and Equity Policy at Tri-State Transportation Campaign. I'm here today to express our strong support for the implementation of congestion pricing, a policy that promises significant transportation and environmental benefits to commuters and residents across the tri-state region. And this includes not only New Yorkers, but commuters from Connecticut, and yes, even those from New Jersey. Congestion pricing is a pivot-- Congestion pricing is a pivotal strategy in our collective effort to combat climate change. New York's transportation sector produces 1/3 of our state's greenhouse gas emissions. With less traffic on our roads and more direct investment in transit, we will see a significant reduction in carbon emissions, fostering a cleaner, healthier environment for all New Yorkers. From increasing station accessibility to transitioning the largest bus fleet in the nation to a zero-emission fleet, the revenue earned from congestion pricing is vital in supporting projects that will make New York City more accessible, efficient, and sustainable. I urge the MTA to adopt swift implementation of congestion pricing and seize this opportunity to lead, innovate, and pave the way for a more livable New York. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cara Girl, followed by Jessie Lang.
Good evening. I'm Cara Girl, Planning and Advocacy Manager at the Permanent Citizens Advisory Committee to the MTA, PCAC. I'm here today with one simple message: the vast majority of people ride transit into Manhattan, and they need congestion pricing. Millions of people from around the five boroughs, Long Island, Westchester, and beyond, and yes, even New Jersey, depend on our trains and buses to get them in and out of the CBD. Point blank, most New Yorkers cannot afford to own or regularly drive a car. It's not at all unreasonable to ask those with the privilege of owning their own private vehicle to pay for the negative impacts they inflict on New Yorkers: fumes and pollution, unsafe streets and roads, constant noise, and congestion at all hours of the day. We've already seen the consequences of entitled traffic lovers attempting to delay this critical law. Signal upgrades, accessibility improvements, transit expansions, new train cars and buses, and vital state-of-good repair work has already been delayed. Who do those delays impact? They harm millions of riders just trying to get around the way real New Yorkers do it on trains and buses. The vast majority of them don't have the spare time to take off from work and spend hours at public meetings to speak in support of transit funding, but they are the very people who need investment in better transit. The people who keep our city running, working-class people just trying to get by, are not the same people fighting congestion pricing. The proposed tolling structure includes rational exemptions and discounts for people who still must drive, including people with disabilities and low-income frequent drivers. Crossing credits directly into the CBD will help reduce toll shopping and lower the cost for many. Congestion pricing will fund a better transit system. It's quite literally the law. It already passed, and we're at the very end of a decades-long debate, public input, and thorough environmental review process. It's time to get it over the finish line without further delay so riders can finally see investment in our transit. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jessie Lang, followed by Lars Gunderson.
Good evening. My name is Jessie Lang. I'm the Housing and Transportation Policy Analyst at the Manhattan Borough President's Office, speaking tonight on behalf of Borough President Mark Levine. I'll be sharing some brief remarks highlighting our priorities on congestion pricing, and I've also emailed longer written testimony. From large projects such as expanding the Second Avenue subway to 125th Street and beyond, and smaller accessibility and reliability projects like new elevator installations and signal modernization, revenue from congestion pricing will make our transit system work better for the millions of New Yorkers who rely on it every day. Unfortunately, the risk of delays that the current pending lawsuits pose threaten dozens of projects that New Yorkers want and deserve and have already waited too long to get. Toll collection must begin without further delay. Among the most common concerns that we hear is from New Yorkers who rely on private transportation due to disability or mobility impairments. I was excited to see that the MTA has developed the Individual Disability Exemption Plan to clarify who is eligible and streamline the process for getting this exemption. The MTA should ensure that the process to sign up is clear, easy, and fair. We have several recommendations for the MTA, city, and state. Implementing congestion pricing alone will mean that we fail to capitalize on other important strategies to improve transportation in Manhattan. The MTA should continue to invest in improving accessory and, where appropriate, expand the E-Hill program. The MTA should also implement all door boarding on all bus routes to speed up bus service. Finally, the city and state need to address how to enforce toll collection when fraudulent and obstructed license plates are now becoming more prevalent. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. We are eager to work with you to ensure that we get the details on this right and make the program a success. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lars Gunderson, followed by Kate Brockwell.
Good evening. My name is Lars Gunderson, and I live in Yorkville. I travel to the CBD most days, always via subway, bus, bike, or on foot. I'm here tonight to support the congestion pricing plan without delay or exemptions. I call on the MTA to continue prioritizing investment in neighborhoods with gaps in transportation access. Living in Yorkville, I've seen the impact of the Second Avenue subway expansion and how that has transformed the neighborhood for the better and improved accessibility. I want this for other neighborhoods. I want to see the Second Avenue subway expanded to 125th Street as soon as possible, and the congestion pricing revenue is essential for funding this and many other projects. Additionally, as someone who walks all over the city, I'm very alarmed by the soaring rates of traffic violence, injuries, deaths from vehicles, and these fatalities can be reduced via fewer cars. Fewer cars mean fewer fatalities, fewer collisions, fewer injuries. And every city all over the world that's implemented congestion pricing has seen reductions in traffic violence and fatalities, and that's something that I'm looking forward to seeing in New York when this program is implemented. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kate Brockwell, followed by Jane Ryback.
Congestion pricing will make our streets safer for pedestrians, drivers, car passengers, cyclists, bus riders. Fewer vehicle trips will mean fewer crashes. I'm here because I was hit by a car as a pedestrian on a freezing afternoon at the end of December in 2017. For the six months, I was visibly physically disabled. Strangers constantly asked me what happened and then declared, "Oh, you just have to be careful." And I get it. People want to believe that you have to do something wrong to get hit by a car. We all see the folks walking around with their noses in their phones, crossing streets, but that wasn't me. Three of my great-grandmothers were killed by cars. I remember walking up to the intersection of Houston and Elizabeth. I was downtown running errands for family. I saw the car that ended up hitting me. He was stopped at the top of Elizabeth, waiting to turn. I looked both ways. I started across the street, and when I was 2/3 of the way to the intersection, he accelerated and drove into me, causing serious orthopedic injuries to four limbs and PTSD. As I said, I was hit in what will be the Central Business District, and the driver who hit me was making a trip of convenience. He had grown up in the city and had moved upstate, and I think no longer understood how complicated it is to drive in New York City and how much attention is required. Congestion pricing will make people like that rethink their trips. In New York, congestion pricing is predicted to result in a 15% reduction in crashes, which would be 71 fewer fatalities and 17,000 fewer injuries a year. Those numbers may or may not sound like much to you, but people like me are the face of those injuries, and I would love to have not been hit by a car every day. Please implement congestion pricing as soon as possible. It will save lives.
Our next speaker is Jane Ryback, followed by Christine Perret.
I'm a New York City taxpayer and resident of the so-called CBD. On 40th Street since 1982, I work in the commercial textile business. In 2014, I accepted a position with a firm in Rockland County as my previous New York City employer went out of business. I hate driving to work. I hate it. But there is no public transportation of any kind that will get me to my job on time on a daily basis. I would love to take a train, but one doesn't exist. I have a $5,700 annual commuting expense, as I need to cross the George Washington Bridge every day to get gas to go to work. Adding this proposed toll adds another $3,600 to my commute bill for a grand total of $9,300 per year. I would need to move out of New York City because this will not be sustainable. I don't receive raises like that at all. The only reason that I drive below 60th Street is to return home and park my car in the garage where I reside. I never take my car anywhere else. I take the subway, the bus, I walk. I'm a New Yorker. I've been a New Yorker for a long time. An added toll is horrifying to me. It will certainly negatively affect the local stores, residents, parking garages, and other businesses. Have you not considered the residents of the CBD that are forced to drive out of the city to work? It is already hard to make ends meet with inflation, super-high prices for food, and higher maintenance charges in my building. I have an increase of 13% in my building. The proposed toll would compound the problem even more. An assessment of my neighborhood at present shows blocks and stores and restaurants that have closed and are completely vacant. There is so much to be lost in revenue and taxes to the city because if the idea is to build more apartments, you can build them, but people won't come to that neighborhood anymore. Over 30 years ago, a law was written to assist Manhattan residents in a garage parking tax exemption to lower the rate by 8%. You know, if your plan is to make up for lost revenue of the billions of dollars of people evading fare payments, you need to pay more attention to enforcement of that than punishing hard-working people as myself. You need to consider Manhattan residents of the CBD, who are the core of New York City, and its prosperity should not be forced to burden.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Christine Perret, followed by Barak Friedman. And I want to be clear that every speaker has two minutes, so we ask that everyone be respectful of that. Our next speaker is Christine Perret, followed by Barak Friedman.
Hello. I'm the co-founder of Checkpads, an organization for pedestrian safety on the west side of Manhattan. And on the west side of Manhattan, I can tell you, we cannot cross the street because of congestion. We cannot breathe because the air quality is horrible. The noise is unbearable, and when you talk about living in the city, I don't know whether we are living in the city or we are living in the middle of cars. So our view is that in order to have a reasonable life, to raise our children, and to raise everybody there, is we need to have less cars. We don't need to have zero cars, but we definitely need less cars. And then the use of the funding for projects for transit for people is really critical so everybody can move through with the proposal you have made, which is very balanced, and we like that. I'd like to second the idea of more taxes for the Lyft and Uber, which are really, really, really clogging our streets. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Barak Friedman, followed by Congresswoman Malia Takas.
Hey there. I'm a resident of the CBD. I live in Murray Hill, Midtown East, and we desperately need congestion pricing. We try to cross the crosswalk. It's full of cars. There's people in wheelchairs and strollers navigating in between the cars. It's out of control. Our buses don't even move. Our fire engines don't even get to the fires on time. Our ambulances can't get to the sick people. You know, it's really upsetting, and for the residents in the Central Business District, we have the, or I should say, Midtown, we have the worst air quality in the entire city, all five boroughs. Midtown Manhattan has the absolute worst traffic congestion, worst air quality, and it affects me personally because my daughter has asthma, and it's not worth it. I don't want your children to have asthma and not be able to breathe. It's honestly just not worth it. So, you know, in summary, I'm a resident of the Central Business District. I strongly support congestion pricing. That's why I'm here. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Congressmember Malia Takas, followed by Vito Fassello. Congressmember Malia Takas. Okay, we'll go back. Vito Fassello.
Hello.
Hi, Congressmember.
Yes, sorry. It just popped up the opportunity to unmute myself. New York City congestion pricing is a slap in the face of the residents in the outer boroughs, and the MTA subverted the National Environmental Policy Act by not conducting a thorough analysis and environmental impact statement required by law. MTA's urgency to implement congestion pricing is driven by capital constraint. It's not by traffic reduction. It's not pollution reduction. In fact, the outer boroughs expect to see increases in both vehicular traffic and air pollution according to the scant environmental assessment that was conducted, and none of the 102 intersections screened for poor air quality and carbon monoxide were on Staten Island, which is completely unacceptable. It is also unconscionable that the Board recommends credits for Lincoln and Holland Tunnel and Hugh Carey and Queens Midtown Tunnel while leaving out Staten Island commuters who have to pay a toll on the Verazano Bridge to connect to the rest of the city in which they live. It is egregious that Staten Island commuters are not included or even mentioned by name in the Traffic Mobility Review Board's Recommendations Report. And while I'll continue to do everything I can to stop this proposal, at a minimum, Staten Island residents should receive a credit toward the congestion fee for the toll that they already pay on the Verazano Bridge. And look, if you guys want people to ride the subway system, you've got to make it safe. Public safety, you've read the reports that came out today. It's a disaster. That's why people aren't riding the subway system. So if you want revenue and want people to ride, that's what you need to do. In addition, you have $700 million in toll evasion, and you're giving out free metro cards. You say you guys need money, and then you have this fare fares program where you just keep on giving out free metro cards to all sorts of people, including individuals who just entered this country. It is just unconscionable you're going to continue to hit hard-working New Yorkers over the head and hurt businesses and residents.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Vito Fassello.
Good evening. My name is Vito Fassello, and I am Borough President of Staten Island, and thank you for the opportunity to comment on this proposal, as I represent about 500,000 people, and we oppose congestion pricing as it's current form. Not to repeat the Congresswoman, but among the reasons for our position is that we already pay two tolls to enter Manhattan. Some may think of owning a car as a privilege, but the fact of the matter is many people on Staten Island who need to commute to work use it as a necessity, in part because over the last 40 or 50 years, the MTA has, you know, basically neglected capital improvements to encourage and get people out of their cars and give them appropriate mass transit options that they desperately want and have been rejected. Just imagine if you, we have one train line on Staten Island. It goes from the South Shore to St. George. Just imagine if every other borough only had one subway line, or if Metro North stopped at the border, or Long Island Railroad stopped at the border. What would people have to do? They would have to get in their cars and drive. And we have a number of issues, as was mentioned, the MTA did its own study, and they were required to analyze traffic. Under this plan, traffic will get worse for Staten Island residents. They also had to analyze the impact of six toxic pollutants, and in each of those cases, all six, toxic pollutants will get worse in year one and will get progressively worse over the next 22 years. That's pursuant, and according to its own study, in an area that already has above-average incidence of respiratory illnesses, asthma, and emergency room visits, and we're going to deliberately intentionally make it worse. The reality is, what we do here now in Staten Island is have to pay to get to work. We are plaintiffs to a lawsuit, and we have a lot of first responders, including teachers, firefighters, and occasion works.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Betsy Plum, followed by Mary Beth Kelly.
Good evening. My name is Betsy Plum. I have the privilege of being Executive Director of Riders Alliance. We strongly support both congestion pricing and the TMRB's tolling recommendations. But tonight, I want to speak a little bit more personally. As might be obvious, I am very pregnant. Navigating New York City while pregnant, or as a new mother or parent, can be tiring and aggravating at best. Then you get to a subway station with a new elevator, or you board a bus that isn't stuck in traffic and allows a stroller, and it's liberating. That liberation, that creation of just a little bit more ease, is part of congestion pricing's promise: to open more of our city to more people, to create pathways for families so we can build lives and futures here, to deliver on the legal mandate of accessibility, and to do all of that around transit, which is, of course, how the vast majority of New Yorkers actually get around. Yorkers actually get around. I also live with a chronic medical condition, one that makes my pregnancy high risk and requires extra monitoring and care. I am currently making multiple trips to the doctor weekly, traveling 12 miles by the A train from my home in Brooklyn to the hospital. Sometimes that train ride is just fine, but many times it is too slow, bogged with delays and in tremendous need of the signal improvements that congestion pricing promises and which lawsuits now threaten. When I get off at the hospital, most of my fellow riders are also going there for work to visit a family member and certainly to receive some of the best medical care there is. The idea that people going to the doctor all drive upsets me. The reality is that most of us take the train or the bus. While I don't have any critique for the transportation choices patients make, public transit riders seeking medical care deserve to be heard too. We don't deserve to be stuck wondering when the doors will close, when the signal delay will clear, when the station will finally have an elevator. We deserve a transit system that makes getting to the doctor the least of our worries. Congestion pricing is part of the answer, and it's part of what makes me proud to be raising a family in this city, and it will certainly be a piece of what continues to make that possible. Thank you. Let's get it done.
Thank you.
The Fair Fares program was raised by a previous speaker. I just want to point out, the Fair Fares program is for low-income New Yorkers, a 50% discount off of fares. And for anybody who wants more information, there is a table in the room outside of the hearing room. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mary Beth Kelly, followed by Jonah Schreiber.
Thank you all for sitting here all night long, listening to us speak. Oh, okay, I'll stand closer. Thank you. I am a founding member of Families for Safe Streets, a group that none of you wish to really be a part of because it means that you have lost a loved one in traffic violence or have been severely injured, like Kate who spoke earlier. I was cycling with my husband, Dr. Carl Henry Nocht, and a tow truck who failed to yield at an intersection missed me but hit him. I would not like to think that he died because of the incredible delay in the arrival of the ambulance, but I heard those sirens screaming for what felt like hours that night. And that was because of the traffic. None of you want to be in a situation where you might have been saved, but you died because there was too much traffic. Congestion pricing is something that, amongst all these other things that it will do, it will make New York City safer for our New Yorkers. We walk, we bike, we take public transportation. Fewer than 50% of us even own cars, let alone use them in the city to get to and from the everyday usage that most people find a way to do on public transportation. I beg you to please consider that you do not want to be in our club. You do not want to lose someone you love because there are too many cars, too many trucks. We have chaos. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jonah Schreiber, followed by Fumiko Chino.
Good evening, and thank you for the chance to testify. My name is Jonah Schreiber. My grandparents moved to New York City in the 1930s. They worked in the Central District their whole life without a car. My mom was born in New York City, went to school in Manhattan without a car. Now I live here in Alphabet City. My son is seven, and when I think about what I want for him as he grows up, a fourth-generation New Yorker, clean air, clean water, to feel safe moving around our city, and to have our bike and bus commute to be a little easier, a little less scary, and faster because of less car traffic, and a safe climate for all of us. This is what I think everyone says they want. It's what we're going to get from the congestion pricing. Look, I sit in a car too, and I blame the traffic around me. When that happens, I forget I am the traffic. Do I look forward to paying the fee when I rent a car? Of course not. But the congestion pricing won't just make it safer for my son and I when we bike and faster when we bus, it'll help me when I'm in a car too. And I'm like the majority of New Yorkers, we don't own cars. No one says they want more cars or more pollution, more dangerous streets, more climate change, but if we have exemptions, that's what we'll get. So I support this toll scheme. I support the limited exemptions as they're shown, and I especially appreciate the variable tolling, where people with larger vehicles that take up more space will pay more. That is only fair. Thanks for seeing this all the way through to a congestion pricing scheme that works for New York. And as he grows up, my son and I will thank you.
Our next speaker is Fumiko Chan, followed by Rosalynn Clay Carter.
My name is Fumiko Chino from Memorial Sloan-Kettering Cancer Center. Every day, thousands of our patients endure intense chemotherapy, radiation, and surgery to survive cancer. I am a radiation doctor. My patients get daily radiation for four to six weeks and are often too sick to use public transportation. They may be unsteady, or nauseous, or immunocompromised. Taking the subway can put them at a real level of harm. This congestion fee is essentially a cancer tax on people who need medical care to survive. It puts an additional $300 minimum to patient costs just for the radiation portion of their care. Medicaid trans support sadly is not an option for most. My patient with breast cancer, who is a single mom, makes $32,000 a year, and she doesn't qualify for Medicaid. She still has significant difficulties affording care and making ends meet. She's doing everything right, working full-time despite significant side effects and working in order to provide for her child. When costs get too high, care gets compromised by families like hers. I know because I do research in financial toxicity or what happens when healthcare becomes unaffordable. Out-of-pocket costs, including transportation costs, are a real barrier to receiving effective care. High costs mean that patients must decide between picking up their medications or putting food on the table, between getting radiation to cure cancer or keeping the lights on. Congestion fees place undue burden on the most vulnerable of us. We need an explicit carve-out for people with cancer or other serious chronic illness that requires medical care. My patients don't choose to have cancer, but you are choosing to tax them because they do, and I beg you to reconsider.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Rosalynn Clay Carter, followed by Paul Crickler. Rosalynn Clay Carter.
Good evening. I'm Rosalynn Clay Carter, a longtime resident of Westchester County. I currently serve on the Permanent Citizens Advisory Committee to the MTA and the Metro North Railroad Commuter Council. I'm here to speak in support of congestion pricing. When I travel into Manhattan from Westchester, I do it by transit, a combination of Metro North and the subway. Transit is by far the fastest, most comfortable, sustainability-supported, least anxiety-producing, and most reliable way to get me to the city. Most New Yorkers and even New Jerseyans must agree, as more than eight in 10 traveling in the Central Business District choose transit. That's why congestion pricing is so important. It will add billions of dollars in investment to our trains, buses, and Metro North. Those who still choose to drive will benefit by faster trips and less traffic. Lawsuits from opponents of congestion pricing are already delaying critical repair work and upgrades around the MTA region. Suits delaying the congestion pricing is in no one's best interest. The proposed tolling structure include key exemptions and discounts for low-income frequent drivers and people with disability, and a 75% lower toll overnight when transit options are more limited. We should encourage commercial companies to take advantage of this greatly reduced overnight tolls. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Paul Crickler, followed by Steve Nareen.
Good evening, Chair and Board. Thank you very much for the opportunity. I'm Paul Crickler. I live in Manhattan. I've lived here 25 years, and I have to say, I love living in this city, but one thing that drives me nuts is how terrible the traffic and congestion is. So I'm fully in support of congestion pricing. I'm fully in support of the plan you have. I think it's outrageous that we live in a place that lets us walk around the city, bumping into cars in the crosswalks when we're trying to cross. I campaigned myself, as have other people, for the Second Avenue bike lane, which came in a number of years ago. I have yet to ride down that bike lane without it being blocked by multiple cars along the length. That's ridiculous. It's also very, very dangerous. So I'm here to say I'd like the congestion pricing. I would love it tomorrow. I think we deserve a better New York. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Steve Nareen, followed by David Paul Gerber.
You got it right the second time. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Steve Nareen, and I've been a resident of Hell's Kitchen for 35 years. Can't hear me now. I'm sorry about that. I understand why congestion pricing is being implemented. However, residents who live within the zone like myself should not be penalized, which we definitely would be if your plan as-is goes into effect. I'm self-employed, and I have a service business and absolutely have to use my car, which I only use for business, by the way, since I supply and service machines located outside of Manhattan, mainly in the Bronx, Queens, and Brooklyn. Once outside the zone for work, the only reason I would re-enter the zone is to return home, which I do two to three days a week. That's $30 to $45 a week, which comes out to more than $2,000 a year. For a little perspective, I've never paid more than $600 to $700 a year for bridge and tunnel tolls. I understand you are recommending a tax credit for low-income zone residents, but for residents like myself, this is of no value whatsoever, since those credits don't help anyone in my tax bracket. All I hear from MTA officials is that if we give exemptions, then everybody has to pay more to support the program. I understand this program is being modeled after the one in London. The London plan offers a 90% discount to all residents who live within the zone. I'm not in favor of zone residents paying anything, but at least that would benefit low-income residents like myself and give us a real discount instead of the tax credits you're proposing. The London discount for zone residents has a strict policy of income and residential proof to qualify for that 90% discount. I would encourage that here as well. Why couldn't the MTA implement this policy and truly follow the London model? Please, don't turn a deaf ear to residents like myself who live below 60th Street. Please give this consideration to zone residents. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Our next speaker is David Paul Gerber, followed by Dylan Kennedy. David Paul Gerber.
Hi, how are you doing?
Good, we can hear you.
Okay, hi, good evening, everyone. I'm starting my video. Hello, hello, everyone. Okay, so I just wanted to be quiet, so I just wanted to remember the conductor and pray for the conductor on the A-line during the overnight that he was slashed, pray for full recovery, so. Congestion pricing, this will be a full part. Part one, and I'm totally against it for four reasons until the MTA gets back together. So we were sort of talking about license plate covers, those illegal license plates. They're used to obey toll cameras as well as enforcement cameras. By the way, there's a vehicle, which is a Dodge Durangle, that's also in the MTA garage right here, right here. Hold on one second. It's in the MTA garage suit. HXN1325. Hold on. Whiteboard. Close, more. Background effect. None. Okay, so, all right, so here we go. This is a video. This is the Bay parking garage. Can you see it okay? This is the MTA-owned garage. The MTA owns this garage, which is in the congestion pricing zone. So I just want you to see that. This is the congestion pricing zone itself. This is the Bay parking garage. Stay right here. This is the garage here. And inside the garage, which is MTA-owned...
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Dylan Kennedy, followed by Raul Rivera.
First off, I'd like to say that this is all a dog and pony show. Nobody's going to listen to the taxpayers, ever. The board members here are probably only concerned about their bonuses. This city was built on the backs of men, hard-working men, real men who smoke cigarettes, drink real beers, and don't wear their seatbelts. Those are the exact people you will be hurting through this congestion tax. The men who make life easier for the rest of us who live in this city, the plumbers, the electricians, the people who make, you know, the stuff that we don't want to do, this is going to be hurting you, because all these people don't live in the city because it's way too expensive. So we import them, and now they're not going to work here because we're taxing them outrageously. It's the cops, the firemen, myself, a paramedic, myself, the construction workers. I'm not going to work down here. You kidding me? I could work in the Bronx. We got better fires in the Bronx, and I don't have to pay $15 every single time I gotta come down here. These are the people who keep this city up and running, and the majority of them who commute daily. My next thing is Broadway is a state road. It's the longest road in, I'm pretty sure, in the country, and for that reason, it gets state taxed. So it should be exempted because then you guys are going to be double effing the taxpayers. You're going to be charging us state and city taxes, and that's not right. It should be an exemption. That's all.
Our next speaker...
No congestion tax!
Our next speaker is Raul Rivera, followed by Sam Deutsch. Raul Rivera.
Good evening, criminals. My name is Raul Rivera. I'm a native New Yorker. I'm a TLC driver with over 23,000 trips. I didn't write anything fancy down, but we want to remind you guys and let you guys know, Mr. Lieber, we have the mayors, we have the mayors, relax, we have the mayors cronies here, we have the mayors lobbyists. They're not identifying themselves. Transalt, street pact, huh? We got a city council, progressive caucus, that is wrong. They oppressive caucus, that's what they are. They oppressive, and this is a crime against a New Yorker. You might not like what I'm saying, but it's a fact. You are BSing New Yorkers. The MTA is a money pit. It's a money pit, and the mayor is a sellout to the New Yorker. The city council members, the majority of them, 90% of them, are selling out people of color. Brooks Powers, you are a sellout. That's what you are. You're selling out people of color. Her district is the furthest one away from the city. The Rockaways, and she's staying quiet. They're not advocating for the New Yorker, for the people of color like they say they do. This is BS. It's a crime against a New Yorker, and Brad Lander will not be mayor of this city. Over my dead body, he will not be mayor of this city. This is a crime. I'm using up all my time. I'm using up all my time, and for each and every one of you, there is a special place in hell for you. Don't you forget that, all right? Lucifer waits for you. He waits for you. Shame on you. I don't know how you can sleep at night. I don't know. I just don't get it. I don't get it. It's outrageous. Criminals. This is bullshit.
Please note, please note, that inappropriate language is unacceptable. You are not to target or call people out, and you are certainly not to use inappropriate Our next speaker... Our next speaker will be Sam Deutsch.
Hi, my name is Sam Deutsch, and I'm Jewish, so I don't believe in hell, but I am here to advocate in support of congestion pricing. I'm a taxpayer living in Chelsea, and I'm frankly pretty sick and tired with how much cars are subsidized in this city. A lot of these subsidies are invisible because if you look at all the free parking in New York, that's public real estate that goes to storing cars that, in my neighborhood... York, that's public real estate that goes to storing cars that, in my neighborhood-- in, in my neighborhood-- Sorry.
We want to hear you, so.
Yeah, yeah. So, yes, in my neighborhood, there are a lot of invisible subsidies of cars. I grew up two blocks from a highway. I have asthma, probably as a result of that, and the pollution that these cars cause negatively affects everybody in the city. And I also, I see ambulances stuck in traffic, all of the great points that people made earlier. So I really support the proposal here for congestion pricing, and I'm really excited to see it implemented quickly. And in my experience, most New Yorkers are not lobbyists, they're normal people like me, who support congestion pricing. So, thank you.
Please note that we have reached an hour of public comment. At this time, we will take a five-minute pause. Members of the public are encouraged to visit the information tables just outside the hearing room, and if you are registered to speak live but would prefer not to wait, you may record your testimony in the lobby area. Please see a staff member in the back of the room for further instructions of how to provide your time. The time is now 7:10, and we will resume at 7:15. We will be resuming the hearing in one minute. Please come in.
Hi, Trevor. Good to see you.
Hi.
Hi.
The time is now 7:20, and we are resuming our public hearing. Our next speaker is Alan Mu Man, followed by Andrew Marcus.
Thank you. So I have been East Village, I was an East Village resident for the last five years, right on St. Mark's Place, very pedestrian-friendly street, or should be more pedestrian-friendly. Anyway, this, one of the silver linings of the pandemic shutdown was that there were virtually no cars on the streets, you know? Runners took over the bike lanes, cyclists had, you know, free rein of the roadways. But today, the streets are full, especially on weekend nights. You know, standing at the corner of St. Mark's and Third Avenue, just kind of looking around on a Friday night, I would say like 90% of the vehicles have TLC plates, at least the ones with real license plates. And so last month, though, I moved to Brooklyn, and, you know, I know that I'll occasionally be one of those people taking a lift home and, you know, paying that extra congestion pricing fee. Even still, I strongly support the plan for congestion pricing and encourage the city to do more to reduce night and weekend traffic by making it more expensive to take the app-based fares and, you know, put that money towards better transit for all. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Andrew Marcus, followed by Elizabeth Adams.
Hello, my name is Andrew Marcus. I'm an urban planner, born and raised New Yorker, and resident in the so-called Central Business District. I'm here today to urge you to halt congestion pricing, because it will be the final nail in the coffin that will relegate Manhattan to become the playground for the wealthy. Working people like me who are trying to survive in the middle class in New York have been hammered in recent years with inflation, insane housing costs, and other costs of living. Congestion pricing will add a major burden on every person who lives, works, runs a business, or shops in the zone by imposing a regressive tax on deliveries. I submitted comments calling out this significant impact, but was ignored in the environmental assessment, which asserted that businesses would simply eat these new taxes, a false statement, and a failure to consider the true impacts. This regressive tax will penalize residents who live in the zone, penalize shoppers, penalize small businesses and property owners who are already pushed to the brink with property taxes, regulations, and the cost of operating in Manhattan. The environmental assessment also failed to consider the scenario where the TLC increases the cap on for-hire vehicles, something they did a few months ago and allowed thousands of new FHVs on the road. There's no coordination between these balkanized agencies, and therefore, the goals of reducing congestion will fail, and this program will simply be a tax. If there are any lawyers listening, make sure you call the MTA for failing to comply with NEPA and state environmental law, since the assessment is faulty and incomplete. This program is set up to fail, and the cost of the program outweigh the benefits. You're going to spend $500 million just to operate this new gigantic bureaucracy. You're going to spend millions on air filters for schools in the South Bronx, which won't even mitigate the impacts on this vulnerable community. There are many other better ways to achieve your goals. Work with the city to reduce, reduce urban lift vehicles, which are the real culprit. Why to impose a fare tax on all new car registrations for New York that makes everyone pay for the benefits that the MTA provides? It's unfair and unconstitutional to impose a tax on people just for living in a specific geography within the same city. The MTA has lost all trust in New Yorkers. We're tired of watching people jump the turnstiles. We're tired of the billion-dollar contracts without accountability for the constructions that fail. Please end this program and do what's in the best interest of New Yorkers, not just in the interest of MTA's budget. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Adams, followed by John Padula.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Adams. I'm the Deputy Executive Director of Public Affairs at Transportation Alternatives, and I'm a New Yorker who, like many others, has relied on the subway, bus, and walking to get around my whole life. New Yorkers' streets are, New York City's streets are the most congested in the entire United States, and as a result, we have alarming levels of asthma, air pollution, traffic injuries, and traffic fatalities, all of which are preventable. Congestion pricing will make it possible for people to choose more sustainable modes to get around and commute, and provide sorely needed funding for public transit. The current status quo of congested traffic and poor transit service isn't working for anyone, and with millions of New Yorkers relying on the subway daily, we have an obligation to put transit riders first. As we've seen it done elsewhere, this program will shift hundreds of thousands of trips out of cars, opening up our streets for improved mobility, greener streets, and fewer traffic crashes. Congestion pricing works. In other cities, bus wait times fell by 30%, and emissions fell by 24%. Those are real people's lives. The funding raised will allow necessary transit upgrades like subway station accessibility, expanding the Second Avenue subway, and funding the Interborough Express. These projects are critical for the future of New York, and they are in danger without the program. For congestion pricing to be successful, we need to move forward with no additional exemptions. Each exemption raises a toll for everyone else who has to pay it. That is simply not fair. This is a climate and safe streets issue. Transportation is the number-two cause of greenhouse gas emissions in New York State, and the proposed zone is currently dangerous and polluted. In the assembly districts that make up the congestion pricing zone, PM 2.5 levels are 17% higher than the citywide average, and serious traffic injuries are 22% higher. We can change this. Transportation Alternatives supports the recommendations put forth by the TMRB. A successful congestion pricing program will help New York address these urgent issues and make our streets safer, greener, less congested, more efficient.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is John Padula, followed by Janet Liff.
Check, check. All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is John Padula, and my opinions tonight are my own. I do not represent any of the organizations that I'm typically affiliated with. I do support congestion pricing. However, I'm a bit reluctant. I'm conflicted, because unfortunately, too many things in life are a double-edged sword. And it has to be equitable to everyone involved. And the other thing that I've been saying all week is that transparency breeds trust. And I know we need this money, but the question is why we need this money? People need to start paying their fares. I'm tired of fare evasion. There has to be an effort to pick up as much money from that as we can, defraud with tolls, whatever we can do, we should do. And I know the magic number is $15 billion, but if we can do some work on the other end, then maybe the magic number is only $12 or $14 billion or $13 billion. I'm tired of New York City taxpayers sending all sorts of money upstream. The feds do nothing but eat from our blood, sweat, and tears. And all they send back are problems that they dump on our lap, and we pick up the check. And we got to clean up everyone's mess. And now that we need to take care of our infrastructure, I don't have to go into the reasons, we all know why congestion pricing is necessary. I've probably bumped into half the cars in New York City myself. There's too many cars. There's, there's a lot of problems. We need new subways. We need new infrastructure, but we don't have the money for it. So, and why? Because the feds are costing us too much money. There's a lot of other issues costing us too much money. So it has to be fair. Transparency breeds trust, okay? And it's necessary, but we can't doubly and triply tax every New York citizen. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Janet Liff, followed by Dylan Kennedy. Hi, Janet, we can hear you.
Hey, I'm, there I am. Hello, thank you for letting me speak. I am a resident of the Central Business District. I am one of 85% of households who do not own cars, and one of 98.5% who get to work walking, biking, or transit. And I'm just going to sort of, kind of almost report from the other side. There was an article in The Times recently that talked about how people become habituated to bad things. And it's not that, you know, we're completely thick-skinned, but things just get sort of progressively worse and worse and worse, until you don't even kind of notice how miserable it is. Although, from a speaker speaking this evening, we would all know how miserable it is. But it also said that to become dis-habituated, it helps to travel. And I have had the good fortune recently of being able to traveling outside of the city and, and seeing some European cities who have made a priority of reducing air congestion and making life better for pedestrians. I'll say it specifically Paris, who has turned itself around. I hadn't been there for 15 years. I went to that city, and I was blown away. I'm like, oh-- there for 15 years. I went to that city and I was blown away. I'm like, oh my God, how can anything be so wonderful, so calm? Where did the cars go? Businesses booming, restaurants are booming, everybody's fine. I come home, I take the air train, I come up on the air to sea, and I see the Sixth Avenue, you know, Sixth Avenue, and it's miserable. And Paris achieved this through closing off streets and also, you know, right now, they're, they've also increased parking. You want to park a big car, it can cost you $250 for six hours. We can't do that, that way. That would not be palpable. So I hope, I think the $15 across the board, possibly higher for FHE, you know, for four higher vehicles, that's something that we can work with the city. And I hope that one day, all these tourists that come to New York-
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Dylan Kennedy, followed by Christopher Davids. Dylan Kennedy on Zoom?
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can. Please start.
Hi, my name is Dylan Kennedy, and I'd like to speak in favor of congestion pricing. Like many people here, most of my time is traveling in and out of the Central Business District, is through public transportation, and I would definitely love more desperately needed funds to make the Q train I ride both more reliable and potentially expanded. I did want to touch on some of the points that people made that I thought were very valid about potential exemptions and changes. And what I would say is, I have great sympathy for all those people, you know, with cancer, or any other medical ailment, who have to travel to the hospital. I don't think the best way to help those people is by, you know, giving a special permit that takes off, you know, $15 a day. A lot of those costs are much greater, and we should care about taking care of the poor, and we should care about taking care of people with cancer. And all of those groups of people would probably be better off not by a discount on a toll, but just being provided more funding and more social support, so that those of them who are not wealthy enough to own a car or can otherwise not operate one, can still get a benefit and still have more financial support. So I hear a lot of the concerns that people are saying, but I would love for my city to have fewer cars, for it to be safer to walk around and to travel. And while I have great sympathy for those for whom this is a great burden, I think we should alleviate that, not by making a discount to drive, but by providing other social supports to decrease the cost of, of living and to decrease the cost of healthcare. And I think that we can encourage some people who can afford it, you know, to, to stop driving into the areas when they don't need to, and the people who can't afford it get a financial boost. And so that's my way, I think, of handling a lot of the groups that people have talked about for exemptions, and that's my pitch. And so I really strongly push for congestion pricing-
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Christopher Davids, followed by Liam Jeffries.
Hi, my name is Christopher Davids, and I love running buses and trains for my entire life. I support it. I support all the congestion prices to invest the NTA, to save the NTA millions. But what about food deliveries? And western ones are struggling to, western ones are struggling too, and bars are struggling to make deliveries, to make monies, to feed their families, to be paid. Construction party, construction party, congestion pricing is part of the plan. And I wish the NTA to work with Nassau Inter County SOS. Nassau County, Nassau Inter County Express wants you to hire it, and want to work with you together as a team and as partners. Nassau County wants, Nassau County Western wants the NTA to work with Nassau Inter County Express in the near future. And I want to get these to Mr. Chairman and you board members. These are my, part of my ideas. So I want to get these to you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Liam Jeffries, followed by Christopher Greif.
Yes, hello. My name is Liam Jeffries, and I am here to speak in favor of congestion pricing, specifically because of the quality of life improvements it would bring to my area of lifelong residents. Like many people here, I live on the Upper East Side, but specifically the lowest part of it that sits just above the proposed congestion zone, and, more importantly, the part next to the 59th Street Bridge. Growing up, there, growing up there, the only environment I knew was one with nonstop and aggressive traffic, to the point that my parents made sure to instill in me from a young age to always be extremely careful around it because of how dangerous it was. This is advice I still adhere to, especially at rush hours when the, when the level of traffic, already ludicrously high and aggressive, swells to the point where crossing streets as a pedestrian becomes outright hazardous. During this time, drivers in traffic routinely block crosswalks when pedestrians have the right-of-way, occasionally leading to confrontations, and I've seen some of these myself, where impatient drivers attempt to go through crosswalks against the light with no regard to the safety of pedestrians and cyclists attempting to lawfully use the intersection. Again, these unacceptably unsafe conditions have been a constant throughout all of my 25 years living in this area, and as such, the impact of congestion pricing, reducing the amount of drivers battling for space around the bridge, would be an absolute game changer. With reduced traffic levels, no longer would I have to worry about drivers blocking and illegally going through crosswalks on pedestrian greens risking all of our safety. No longer would nonstop high traffic worsen noise and air pollution and bus service for area residents and workers. I say this from experience, being stuck on numerous buses on Third Avenue. And perhaps most importantly, children in this part of Manhattan would no longer need to have it taught to them just how dangerous the traffic in this area is if this dangerous level of traffic no longer exists. I thank the board for the chance to speak on this and ask them to get this done, and soon, we need this. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Christopher Greif, followed by Dana Dennis.
Good evening. I'm Christopher D. Greif. As an advocate for people with disability for over 30 years, what we need right now is, we need the accessible train stations for a lot of reasons. Not just one person with a disability, but there are a lot of disabilities. And let's not forget disability veterans, seniors. What we have been trying to fight for, for years and years, is to have accessibility, not just elevators, ramps, technology. As you see the pictures coming up, update our subway trains. We have the R211 now, but we need them as soon as possible. We have older trains that needs to retire, and let's move on to newer trains. I thank the MTA because at least we have cameras on the car 68s, and I really am glad that we brought up today about safety. We need to work together with the NYPD, but we also need to make sure funding is covering not just the NYPD, MTA police, and all security that works to us together. As an advocate for disability, we need the accessibility funding for updating our buses, accessoride. How can we do that without funding? And our elected officials who are forgetting about people with disabilities that do travel also only talk about the full fare. I'm sorry, but there is a reduced fare pricing. And insulting a person like me as a disability, it hurts me to hear that. We always work together with fair fares, reduced fare. We need to make sure that the fare is there for a reason. I encourage all my advocates who are here or watching, we need the funding for accessibility. Let's get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dana Dennis, followed by Timothy Moore.
Good evening. My name is Dana Dennis, and I'm a senior organizer with the Riders Alliance. I have spent a good part of the last five years promoting congestion pricing, and I'm definitely in favor. I'm a lifelong New Yorker. I've spent my entire life living off of the A, C, and E line until most recently, when I had to move to Jersey, and now I'm a resident of Essex County. I own a vehicle. I had to buy one, because if you think transit sucks in New York, move to Jersey. It was horrible, trying to get in and out from Newark, New Jersey, to Union Square with a child, my oldest, that has special needs and a disability, for multiple doctor's appointments a week. And so I stand here today telling you, and I'll move away from the Riders Alliance part and just tell you how I feel personally as Dana. I know the doubt and the fear that people feel around this program, right? Systematic racism and redlining has plagued our city for many years. And so what it has done, it has made some of us feel like we are more privileged based on where we were born, where we grew up in this city, and where we currently reside. But that's not the case. And so we have a very Manhattan focus, and we start to think that programs like congestion pricing are only for those who live here, but it's not. I'm going to tell you, as someone who grew up in Bed-Stuy and Crown Heights, it's for you. Far Rockaway, it's for you. The Bronx, I heard people bring up asthma multiple times tonight. And a lot of times, as Black and Brown folks and marginalized folks, immigrant folks, we are the last to find out and the first impacted. So I'm asking you all to get on board, even if you're not part of those communities, but specifically if you are, pay attention to this program. If you have waited long wait times at a bus stop, it's for you. If you had to get up extra early and you were still delayed to get to work, congestion pricing is for you. If you had money cut out of your paycheck as a result of that delay, you paid an extra fee for something, you missed a job interview, it's for you.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Timothy Moore, followed by Luke Camery. Timothy Moore on Zoom.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please continue.
Great, thank you. Good evening. My name is Timothy Moore. I will not take the full two minutes. I'm a resident of Manhattan, living in the Central Business District with my family. I'll start by saying that I fully support congestion pricing as a legitimate revenue stream for the MTA. I've been living here for the last 20-plus years. My family and I are avid walkers, bikers, and regular takers of public transportation. And with that said, on principle, it is unfair and ridiculous to subject residents who live in the CBD to congestion pricing. We, of course, already, already pay a special city tax for living here. We don't contribute to the primary congestion you're trying to address because we keep our car in the garage and only use it on weekends, and the technology exists to easily exclude cars with license plates which are registered to residential CBD addresses. Alternately, there could be some allowance to allow a certain number of trips for residents living in the CBD. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Deborah Greif, followed by Omer Ahmed. Oh, I'm so sorry. Continue.
Okay. Hi, I'm Luke Camery, resident of-
Sorry, Luke.
No worries at all. Thanks for having us tonight. Resident of the CBD, lifelong, grew up in West Village, and I live in the East Village. Also grew up in one of the rare households downtown that has a car. It's great, but I agree with a lot of people who've spoken tonight. It's a total luxury. I took three trips out of the CBD this weekend, I counted it, in a car. It was nice, happy to pay the toll. I'm completely in support of congestion pricing. Every day, I commute to work along 13th Street on my bike, and the worst part of my commute is that, for example, today, there were 21 cars parked in the bike lane on 13th Street, forcing me to merge back in the main lane of traffic. There are cars everywhere downtown. They're parked, double parked, taking up a ton of space. I would love to continue to live in my neighborhood with fewer cars. And I'm happy, when I need to take a car trip, when I want to take a car trip, to pay the toll. I think it's only fair for those of us who every day bike, take the train, walk around lower Manhattan, and love living here, but hate the fact that we're constantly navigating around cars. The only thing I don't like about the current congestion pricing program, my gym is right by the Lincoln Tunnel, and there are just cars absolutely pouring out of there every day after work. Incredibly dangerous. I empathize and agree with a ton of the people who have spoken today, that there, it's not only the environmental factor, it's not only the speed and the convenience, it's also just the fact that it's dangerous. And I, so I'm not supportive of the fare credits for the tunnels. I would love to see even fewer cars coming out of New Jersey every day. I think it's an extreme hazard. I agree a lot of those drivers don't know how to drive in downtown Manhattan. A lot of people taking illegal, right on reds. We've all experienced it. We've all nearly been hit. A lot of us have been hit. I'd like to see that end. Thank you so much for the time today.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Deborah Greif, followed by Omer Ahmed. Deborah Greif on Zoom. Deborah Greif.
Okay, I'm ready, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please continue.
Hey, good evening. My name is Deborah Greif. I am a lifelong New Yorker, and live in Brooklyn. We, I am totally in favor of congestion pricing, especially after it, I use accessoride for many trips. I had to go to a meeting at Two Broadway. The accessoride driver picked me up on time. We made time. It was great. We get through the, the, I'm calling it still the Brooklyn Battery Tunnel, even I know it's the Ucarri. I just aged myself, but everything was fine until he tried to get me to Two Broadway. It took over a half an hour just to get from the tunnel into Two Broadway. My cousin and I were squirming because we needed the restroom, but he couldn't let us out because this big van from New Jersey with one driver was blocking everything, and he had no way to get us off because I used a walker for mobility. I'm in favor of it because I'm tired that we do not have enough accessible stations in the outer boroughs where I live. I'm not that far out from Coney Island, Stillwell. Many times I have to go home through Stillwell Avenue to make sure I can get down the ramps and get home by a bus. There, because you can't always take accessoride if it's a spur of the moment, and no, I will not use broker service. But I want everyone to realize that we in the outer boroughs deserve to have the same accessible, Manhattan has more accessible train stations than we do. We need more accessibility, and we need to have less cars so that the people with disabilities and others who really need to go to work and transport people with disabilities will have the ability to get there on time without being stuck for a half an hour because a big car is trying to figure out how to park. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Omer Ahmed, followed by Vishnu Reddy.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I am a lifelong New Yorker and a current Brooklyn resident who commutes daily to the Central Business District. I understand firsthand the challenges of our city's traffic congestion, traffic that is by far the worst in the country, with average New Yorkers suffering from more than 117 hours of traffic a day nearly a week. We face a critical task, ensuring a sustainable funding source for our vital public transportation system, one that is used by the vast, vast majority of New Yorkers, while addressing the impact of high traffic and taxes for our fellow New Yorkers. I strongly support congestion pricing and believe that it offers a proven solution with benefits for motorists, taxpayers, and transit users. For motorists, similar studies from similar cities like Stockholm and London that implemented similar programs suggest we could see a 25% reduction in traffic in the Central Business District. That is time that can be spent with your loved ones, spend time watching Dune, spend time actually enjoying time not in traffic, benefits that accrue directly to motorists in the form of faster commuters. For taxpayers, congestion pricing generates $1 billion annually without further burdening all of us with the continued expense of maintaining and upgrading our public transit systems. And finally, and potentially most obviously, it leads to funds that can be utilized to improve transit service, reduce disruptions, and ultimately create a stronger, cleaner, and more reliable transit system for all. Therefore, I thank you and urge you to actively pursue the implementation of congestion pricing.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Vishnu Reddy, followed by Jose Hernandez.
Hi, my name is Vishnu Reddy, and I'm a Brooklyn resident. I'm here to express my wholehearted support for the congestion pricing plan. I want to see New York City lead the way and live up to its potential as America's walkable, transit-oriented, and climate-friendly city. The congestion pricing gives, plan gives me hope that we can live up to that potential. I want to live in a city where I'm not breathing in the pollution from- I want to live in a city where I'm not breathing in the pollution from fossil fuels, brake dust, or tire dust all the time. I want to live in a city where our country's slowest buses and emergency services become one of the fastest. I want to live in a city where our goals, where our goods can get delivered smoothly and tradespeople are able to get to their work sites faster. I want to live in a city without the rampant blocking of intersections and crosswalks and without the incessant honking. I want to live in a city that makes generational investments in our public transportation infrastructure. Congestion pricing will help us meet all of those goals. This process has gone on for far too long and we must implement congestion pricing without any further delay. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jose Hernandez, followed by Matthew Carter. Jose Hernandez. Our next speaker is Matthew Carter. Matthew Carter. The next speaker is Peter Maloney. Peter Maloney. The next speaker.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Is this Peter?
Yes, it's Peter Maloney.
Hi, Peter. Please start. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Peter Maloney. I live and work in Brooklyn and I'm concerned about the unfair burden the MTA Central Business District tolling program will have on motorists in Brooklyn and actually all over Long Island who travel outside the city for business, pleasure, or family reasons. I'm not against congestion pricing program in general. In fact, I'm a big user of public transportation. However, as the program is currently designed, it would add a cost of up to $30 per trip for anyone who wants to exit or return to the city via the Holland or Lincoln Tunnels. Accessing either of those tunnels, whether inbound or outbound, requires traveling a few blocks on streets designated within the CBD tolling area. For instance, a motorist coming from New Jersey via the Holland Tunnel would be charged for driving the two or three blocks necessary to access the West Side Highway to reach the Battery Tunnel or any other East River Crossing, or any other, to go back to Brooklyn or any other location on Long Island. And they would therefore bear the full cost of contributing to downtown congestion. As designed, the congestion pricing program penalizes drivers who are not materially contributing to downtown congestion. The motorists I described have no intention of driving in downtown Manhattan, are being penalized for trying to exit the city. In the cases of the Lincoln and Holland Tunnels and possibly the Brooklyn Bridge, they have no other option than to use existing downtown streets that provide access to the tunnels. And there's certainly no public transportation alternative available for them to go to New Jersey or Rockland County or someplace like that. The CBD tolling program should be amended to more accurately address its stated goals, reducing traffic in downtown Manhattan and encouraging wider use of public transportation. Instead, the program penalizes drivers who have no other option and who are not materially adding to the problem the program is designed to address. The current design will also have unintended consequences. Motorists exiting.
Thank you. Please note that public turnout tonight is high and there may be extended wait times to speak. If you prefer to record your comment on video or in writing, there are members of the MTA Board and executive staff ready to receive your comment. There are also comment cards and a live stenographer. Please see a staff member in the back of the room for instructions on how to record your comment today. All recorded comments will be included in the official record, distributed to all MTA Board members and made available on the MTA website and YouTube channel. Our next speaker is Danielle Avasar, followed by Imam Ramawi Doster. Danielle Avasar. Moving on, Iman Ramawi Doster. Iman Ramawi Doster. All right. Our next speaker is Mile Vender Wilson, followed by Spruul Love.
Hi, my name is Miles and I'm a high school student from Queens and I take the subway to school every day. I'm speaking in support of congestion pricing because of the many benefits it will bring to everyone who lives and works in New York City. Space on our streets is valuable and shouldn't be given away for free to giant vehicles taking up space, making our streets more dangerous, and making us all breathe polluted air. With congestion pricing, people will be able to travel faster by bus, car, walking, and biking. Being in Manhattan will be so much more pleasant without so much of the constant noise and pollution caused by the excessive amount of car traffic going through Manhattan every day. It's important to remember that the vast majority of people in New York City don't own cars and even fewer commute to Manhattan via car. And for those who do still wish to commute that way, it will make it faster for them to do that and they will save so much time that way, as well as all of the people taking the bus and biking and walking. The plan will make the subway more accessible to more people with numerous accessibility improvements and make it easier for those who struggle with taking stairs and do those in wheelchairs. I do, however, think that it's a shame that none of the funds that will be raised from the tolling program are going to New Jersey Transit or The Path because I think they're both also incredibly important for making this plan work and for ensuring that those in New Jersey are able to still commute by public transit. I want to close off by saying that I'm strongly in support of congestion pricing and I hope that it can be implemented without any further delay or exemptions. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ned Sullivan, followed by Rosalyn Seal. Ned Sullivan. On Zoom. Okay, our next speaker is Rosalyn Seal on Zoom. Rosalyn Seal.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Rosalyn?
Yes.
Please begin.
Hi, so I'm here at the encouragement of my state senator and my councilman. I represent residents who live in the zone who have cars. Yes, there are people who live in the zone who do in fact have cars. In fact, every new building that is built in this area has a parking garage, so the city and the state are very much aware of this. If this program is truly modeled after the London Plan, zone residents should have a significant discount on the toll because people do actually live here. It is not just a business district. We are the people who use our cars almost exclusively to leave the city. But because of the location of the sensors, the moment I leave my parking garage, I will be charged for being in the zone, even though my car is by default always in the zone. I, like many residents of my neighborhood, use my car to work in New Jersey, Westchester, and beyond. We are not circling around looking for parking, coming in at peak times, or otherwise driving around willy-nilly. In short, we are not contributing to the congestion because we use our cars to leave. I, like many residents, live in subsidized housing. Actually, almost all my friends that live in Manhattan live in subsidized housing. Not everyone living here is rich. I am certainly not. Not everyone with a car is rich. I am certainly not. I am the definition of working class and grew up deep in Two Fair Zone, Brooklyn. Residents in the zone already pay parking garage fees, and I will say it again, we are the only people who almost exclusively use our cars to leave the zone. So when this starts, the moment I leave my parking garage, if I drive one block to the Lincoln Tunnel, I will get charged. If I drive two blocks to the West Side Highway, I will get charged. Why are we facing a burden that's higher than the rideshare riders? Unlike them, we walk or take the subway while traveling through the CBD. I have never even taken a taxi while in the zone of the CBD. Why would I? It is unfair that we are being charged when they are not.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Ned Sullivan, followed by Andrew Hyatt. Ned Sullivan on Zoom. All right. Our next speaker is Andrew Hyatt, followed by Connor Bannan.
Yeah, thank you. I, I live in the CBD, or as some call it, the so-called CBD. And I used to live in Queens and I think, I think what, with a lot of the heated rhetoric here, I think what, there are people that do not want to pay more money. But I think what's lost in this discussion is that those of us that live in the CBD pay much more serious costs. We, we've heard stories already about paying costs with our lives waiting for ambulances. We've heard stories about paying costs with chaos in our, in the streets, you know, when the more cars there are, the more traffic there is, the more chaos, the more uncertainty, the more harder it is to do very simple things, the more noise there is, the more honking, the more matted cars there are. These things are plaguing our streets. These things, even the traffic, this has proven to shorten people's lives. So the people in the CBD, and of course, there's the pollution. There's the pollution that is not just from tailpipe exhaust, but also from tire pollution, which is even greater than exhaust, right? So these things cause asthma, these things cause sickness, these things cause death, these things cause real problems for the CBD. It is completely fair to take a set of trade-offs that have existed for a set of time and change those trade-offs slightly so that we, what we pay for in our lives are traded off with a little bit of money from some people. I think this is reasonable. We need the capability to make this happen. So I support this proposal and I would love to see it happen as soon as possible. Please, please help us do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Connor Bannan, followed by Courtney Gieland. Connor Bannan on Zoom.
Hi, good evening. My name is Connor Bannan and I'm a resident of Forest Hills in Queens.
We can hear you. Please continue.
Okay. I'm asking that congestion pricing be implemented without further delay and without allowing any further exemptions. If the city is serious about aggressively meeting their climate goals, we must implement congestion pricing. In the past 30 years, we've, of course, seen a large increase in electric and hybrid vehicles, and yet CO2 emissions from vehicles have outpaced population growth in New York City over this time. Combined with the particulate emissions from brakes and tires and the excessive noise pollution produced by personal vehicles, the city should be using every tool at their disposal to reduce motor vehicle use and to encourage trips via transit, biking, and walking. Congestion pricing is just one of those tools, but we have research and direct evidence from other major cities that show it will do exactly this: reduce personal vehicle use, reduce emissions, reduce traffic fatalities and injuries, and improve transit. The current reality is that those who choose to drive vehicles in New York City are imposing a health, safety, and time tax on the rest of us. It's only fair that those vehicle users should pay their share. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Courtney Gieland, followed by Maddie Buchies-Hyland.
Hi.
Hi. I'm here to ask you to reconsider taxing residents and public servants who live in the zone. As a public school teacher who commutes from midtown Manhattan to a New York State public school, I am deeply concerned about this proposal for congestion pricing in our city. This new tax would not only burden hard-working individuals like me, but would also exacerbate the heavy financial strain on the working and middle class. Let's examine the facts. For the past five years, the New York State School District 2% tax levy has severely impacted my, my ability to receive a raise. Despite the annual inflation rate hovering around 3.1%, by paying city residential taxes of 3.4%, I have only seen a meager 1.2% increase in my salary. Again, this is 1.2% over five years because of a state tax, wherein the state is also backing this, and I'm being double taxed just to come home to my house in the zone. I do not drive around the zone. I commute to work to teach children. Furthermore, during the height of the COVID pandemic, public servants, especially schoolteachers, were considered essential. While others were able to work remotely, I was mandated by the state employer to commute. Basically, ooh. Basically, you have to be fair to people who live in the zone. We work hard, we're good residents, we can't pay this money off to customers. We work so hard to make this the Big Apple, and this is just going to make it the rotten apple for people who live here. So please reconsider.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Maddie Buckes-Hyland, followed by Ayaz Levengia.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and to the ladies and gentlemen tonight. I'm Maddie W. Buckes-Hyland. Okay. Can I begin again?
Please, please continue.
Please, please continue.
All right. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and to the ladies and gentlemen of the, of everyone. I'm Maddie W. Buckes-Hyland. Today, for tonight's topic, I'm going to speak about the issues of congested pricing at this hearing. The first example we need to consider is, while I do support having less cars on the road and, and like, less pollution, I do oppose the price of the congested pricing at $15. As Commissioner Mack stated on December 6th MTA Board meeting, he said, yo, it would cost a lot of money for a family that would travel from there to see someone they love. That I cannot support. Without buses like the Megabus or Greyhound, they're going to raise prices on that as well. So ladies and gentlemen, I hope you're ready to pay more if this comes to fruition. Anyway, I'll, that's going to be a very expensive trip. I will unders hope you can pay more. Although, I saw the boardroom today with WABC's Sonia Rainco. And if Sonia's there, how you doing? Anyway, I'll leave it at that. Anyway, have a great night and may God bless each and every one of you. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker.
Our next speaker.
Is Ayaz Levengia, followed by Benji Leon. Ayaz? Our next speaker is Benji Leon, followed by Samuel Setella.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Benji Leon. I'm a member of writers' alliances. Like our executive said earlier, Betsy and Dana, we're in support of congested prices because we feel that it will benefit our, especially our writers, better bus, that will, it means better bus service, better elevators, more environmentally friendly buses and train, and safer air, and safer street. Like many of you have said earlier, you know, it's not safe on the street. And I myself, who are, who's an auntie to many kids, and also whenever I come in town, I come in the city at least three times a month to travel. I don't feel safe. Even in New York, driving in New York is not safe. So I feel like it's better, you know, when the bus and trains. So I feel like it's better, you know, when the buses and trains will be, will be better in, because it would be better services. Like COVID, during COVID, a lot of us was, was taking buses and train. Unless you really had to go to work, taking the, driving, a lot of us were taking buses and trains. So keep that in mind. And the air, when you step outside your house, it was better. Well, I know when I step outside my house, it was better, cleaner air outside, because the street was less car, less people walking around. So I feel that, you know, we should take into account our environment, the cleaner air, because you have a lot of people sick. Like, I work with children, I teach in the morning, and I have, most of the students, a lot of them have asthma because of the air that we, that is polluted. So we need to take better care of our planet, because driving is not really that much of safe, especially when you live in a neighborhood where you have a lot of people complaining how the air is not great, and also a lot of people, the driving is making confusing, making a lot of noise. They don't feel safe in their own neighborhood. So we, I feel like a lot of people that live in CBD, CBC, support us as well. So we need to take into account our environment first before anything. And I feel that this, this proposal will be better for our community and for our planet. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Samuel Satella, followed by Graham Bashai.
Hi. I'm Samuel Satella, and as I said in front of a TV camera a couple hours ago, I've been living in southeast Queens for eight years now, and I am low-income. I am the kind of person that elected officials and policymakers say that they're fighting for as they openly oppose congestion pricing, but I support congestion pricing 100%. It will not be a slap in the face to me, or a crime against me, or regressive, but in aid. It will not oppress me, but help me, because I don't drive. I don't take Ubers or Lifts either. It's far too difficult and stressful to try to begin to access those things today before congestion pricing. So exempting me from the $15 toll won't make a difference. And, you know, when my financial situation changes for the better, I don't aspire to drive. I value my mental health too much to stress out over driving and parking, and I don't want to impose any danger, stress, and pollution towards people like, people walking, people using a bicycle, mobility device users, parents with strollers, students. What will make a difference for me? Better subways, more elevators, faster buses without illegally parked cars in the way, safer streets without noise, and the physical threat of an aggressive driver or cars blocking a crosswalk. Those are all features I use today and want to keep using in the future. So I'm one faced to the statistics you may have come across since congestion pricing was enshrined in legislature back in 2019. Now you have heard what I actually want, and I look forward to prompt and full implementation without further delays. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Graham Bashai, followed by Trevor Holland.
Hey, everybody. My name is Graham Bashai. I'm a resident of Brooklyn, and I rise in strong support of congestion pricing that accurately reflects the toll that private vehicles take on our city and channels that money back into making a transit system that working-class New Yorkers and all New Yorkers deserve. I do not own a car, and I hope to never. Instead, I'm one of the millions of everyday people who rely on our buses and trains and active transportation infrastructure to get around, and I like this. A chronic spinal injury means that I, that not owning a car is also one of the best things I can do for my long-term health, and that is true for most of us in this room. Being able to live without the burden of vehicle ownership is a blessing. It allows me to experience the beauty of New York streets, patron small businesses, and do my part to save our planet from climate crisis. But thanks to a century of policies that place cars above people, this also comes with severe headaches and dangers. Let's talk about some facts. In 2022, there were 100,508 car accidents over the course of the year, 37,848 of which involved an injury or a fatality. This is about life and death. Car-brained drivers, who I get it, are irate with traffic, the thing we're solving, makes New York streets miserable with reckless driving and unlivable levels of noise pollution. New York has the slowest buses in the country, and year after year, they are getting slower. That is a fact. It's also a fact that a better way is possible for drivers and non-drivers alike: less traffic, shorter journeys, safer streets, a livable city and planet. We live in a shared community. We cannot act out of self-interest alone. This is something that every member of this community should be actively in favor of. Let's get it done.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Trevor Holland, followed by Kenneth Lay.
My name is Trevor Holland. I'm president of the Two Bridges Tower Resident Association. I live along the FDR in the CBD, which is one of the most effective areas by the MTA's congestion pricing plan. I'm also a member of the MTA's Environmental Justice Stakeholder Working Group, but I feel that my voice and my residents' voices have not been heard. The MTA's own modeling shows that congestion pricing will increase on the, on the FDR Drive by up to 26% between 10th Street and the Brooklyn Bridge. This will directly affect the Two Bridges neighborhood, which is already burdened by pollution, noise, and a lack of green space. As one of the only designated environmental justice areas in the CBD, we are entitled to fair treatment and meaningful involvement in environmental decision-making. But the MTA has failed to uphold the principles of environmental justice. It is shameful that the MTA has said in public meetings that, yes, the Lower East Side along the FDR will have more traffic and pollution, but the rest of the city will have less. The MTA also considers the legitimate health concerns of low-income residents and people who live of color who live along the Lower East Side as frivolous. This is an insult to our dignity and our right to a healthy environment. We already suffer from high rates of asthma, heart disease, and cancer due to existing sources of pollution in our neighborhood, such as the Department of Sanitation Truck Depot, the EMS and Fire Department Truck Depot, a DOT short shed, a convention center, and a DOT asphalt plant, all located underneath the FDR. The MTA's plan will only worsen our health and quality of life. Add to insult that the MTA offers absolutely no financial mitigation whatsoever, none. How is a plan that is supposed to reduce traffic and pollution actually increasing traffic and pollution in the only environmental justice area in a tolling zone? How is that fair, and how is that just? We demand that the MTA reconsider its congestion pricing plan and listen to the voices of people who are most impacted by it. And by the way, Polly Trottenberg, one of the architects of the-
Thank you for your comment.
-pricing plan, said that traffic will-
Thank you for your comment. Thank you. Our next speaker is Kenneth Lay, followed by Christopher Johnson.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Kenneth Lay. I've been a Brooklyn resident for 12 years. I rely solely on public transit and biking to get around New York. I work in the CBD every day. I'm here with Riders Alliance, and I'm a very strong supporter of congestion pricing. Traffic violence in New York is a serious public safety crisis, and one of the root causes is frankly that there are just too many cars in a city that doesn't have space for them. So I welcome any effort to reduce car volumes for that reason, as well as for the huge transit benefits, environmental benefits. I very strongly support congestion pricing. As regards the toll structure, I think it seems overall very fair. I would echo those who call for a higher fee for app-based rides in particular, not the cabs, but the app-based rides. I understand that's something like 50% of the congestion, and it's just getting worse. And second, I would request that for individuals who fall into the low-income driver bracket, my understanding is that they would receive a tax credit. I'm not sure that's necessarily fair if it isn't instantaneous. So I would request that for low-income exemptions, if possible, be an instantaneous credit rather than something you take at the end of the year on your tax return. In any event, thank you very much for your hard work on this, and I am very excited for the invitation.
Our next speaker is Christopher Johnson, followed by Ned Sullivan. And before you speak, for those on Zoom, there is a six-second delay, so we just ask that you be patient as we try to unmute you.
Hello. My name is Christopher Leon Johnson, and I'm totally against congestion pricing. Now, the situation is, you got trash like Betsy Trash right here, right next to me, that's for congestion pricing. Betsy Trash is making a lot of money.
Sir, absolutely not.
All right, all right. Let me tone it down. All right, let me tone it down. All right. So let me go forward. Wait, 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 I'm not here. Wait, wait, wait. Wait, wait, wait.
Please note, the following rules of conduct and decorum. The rules of conduct and decorum shall apply to all members of the public who speak at MTA public hearings. The MTA reserves the right to disallow anyone who violates those rules from speaking or continuing to speak, and you may be removed from the premises. Please continue.
All right. So my name is Christopher Leon Johnson, again, for the record, and I'm against congestion pricing. Now, the problem is, we have organizations like the Rides Alliance, that's ran by Betsy Plum. Her name is Betsy Plum, okay? Wait, 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 her name is Betsy Plum. Wait.
Our next speaker is Ned Sullivan on Zoom. Ned Sullivan on Zoom. There is a five to six-second delay. We will come back to Ned. So, the time is now, wait. Ned, is that you?
I'm here. Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Please start your public comment.
I am Ned Sullivan, president of Scenic Hudson. As the largest environmental organization in the Hudson Valley, Scenic Hudson has committed to facing new and ongoing challenges to the region's sustainable future, including the urgent threat posed by climate change. We therefore support the key objectives of the proposed Central Business District tolling program, as long as the funds it generates are invested in enhancing public transportation options for the communities of the Hudson Valley. Scenic Hudson has long recognized the importance of promoting access to transit systems and reducing dependence on cars for mobility. With that in mind, we acknowledge that the greatest benefit of the tolling program would be to immediately reduce incentives for unnecessary vehicle trips into the city, improving air quality and lightening the amount of traffic on roadways. In addition, the program would support much-needed improvements to public transportation infrastructure, helping us move away from dependence on individual vehicles. While we broadly support taking necessary measures to achieve these goals, we understand the program will impose a real cost on area residents who rely on regular vehicle trips into the Central Business District. We commend the Traffic Mobility Review Board for its recommendations to keep the tolls simple as most possible and to prioritize equity. We respectfully offer that despite ongoing dedicated efforts to provide transportation services to underserved communities, there remain gaps in services provisions that leave individuals with limited viable alternatives to using their own vehicles, particularly in communities west of the Hudson.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you. We have now reached an hour of public comment, a second hour of public comment. At this time, we are going to take a five-minute break. Members of the public are encouraged to visit the information tables just outside the hearing room. If you are registered to speak live but would prefer not to wait, you may record your testimony in the lobby area. Please see a staff member in the back for further instructions on how to provide your comments. The time is now 8:24, and we will resume at 8:29. Thank you.
Speaking via Zoom. There will be a brief transition after you are called to speak, about a five to six second delay. During that time, please ensure that your microphone and camera, if desired, are enabled before you begin your remarks. Our next speaker is Andrea Peterson, followed by Brian Peck. Andrea Peterson on Zoom.
Hi, I'm Andrea Peterson, and I live in Little Italy, a short distance from Canal Street, and I've lived here for over 40 years. Canal Street has become a parking lot. It never was great, but, oh, starting my video, excuse me. The honking is unbearable. Walking in the blocked crosswalks, walks is scary, particularly for parents with children and the elderly. Thirteen lanes of traffic leading from the Holland Tunnel to the Manhattan Bridge are crazy, very unsafe, bad for the environment, bad for asthma. They do harm for our quality of life in general. I think it's time to put people first and people's health and to start congestion pricing immediately. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brian Peck, followed by Pearl Shavzen.
Good evening. I want to start by thanking the many executives that are sitting in front of me for listening to comments on this program. I'd imagine it's going to be a late night for you guys, so I appreciate your time. My name is Brian Peck. I'm a resident in Yorkville, and I want to speak tonight in full support of the congestion pricing proposal. As Juliette Michelson pointed out during her remarks earlier this evening, New York City is overwhelmingly transit-dependent. I think that this program is going to affect most of us than not. The MTA simply needs additional funding to do all of the great things that they have promised that they are going to do with this funding. Needed improvements such as bus service enhancements, zero emissions buses, accessibility improvements, including the installation of elevators at subway stations, and subway service enhancements are in store with the implementation of the congestion pricing program. Congestion pricing, for those of you who don't use transit, also reduces emissions, reduces congestion, enhances safety, and improves overall quality of life for all New Yorkers, regardless of whether or not you're using the train. On the topic of the issue that you've solicited our feedback tonight on the tolling structure, I find that it is a fair offset for the externalities associated with congestion, although I would resonate with those that have commented on the fees for for higher vehicles. I find that they could be a little bit higher for those that choose to use a taxi or an Uber. Thank you so much for your time, and I appreciate the opportunity to comment on this program. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Pearl Shavzen, followed by Pat Johnson. Pearl Shavzen on Zoom. Please unmute yourself.
Sorry, I thought I pressed the button. Good evening. My name is Pearl Shavzen. I'm a neurodiversity and accessibility advocate who lives in downtown Jersey, Jersey City in New Jersey. Tonight, I'd like to speak as a New Jersey resident who relies on public transit and voiced my support for implementing the MTA's congestion pricing plan without delay. Often, accessibility is viewed as a niche issue affecting just a percentage of society and the popular understanding of disability focuses on a still smaller segment of people. This narrow view of accessibility also fails to account for the broad benefits that improve equity and access for the population at large. Here, I'm speaking about the curb cut effect, which is the phenomenon where disability-friendly features are used and appreciated by many others. The name comes from those little dips at the corners of sidewalks that so many of us have come to take for granted while moving around cities, at least until there isn't one where we need it for a stroller or a large suitcase, or because we've been injured or have been sick and getting around is just a little harder now. Wheelchair users fought to make curb cuts part of our urban environment so they could participate in public life, but most, if not all of us, have benefited from them. But it's not about just funding ADA improvements like elevators, because this is also about making transit work reliably and smoother smoothly for other people like myself who do not fit the common idea of who disabled people are. As a neurodivergent person, I rely on transit because driving takes a lot of mental energy, and I just kind of want to save that brain space for other things. And when I moved from the East Village to Jersey City, it was before I knew I was autistic or ADHD, and I hope people realize that that indicates how much I relied on public transit before knowing I was disabled. I will stop there, but thank you so much for the time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Pat Johnson, followed by Michelle Dotton.
Cool. Good evening. My name is Pat Johnson. I've been a New Jersey resident for 40 years, over 40 years, and a yellow cab driver for past 12 and a half years, pandemic notwithstanding. Over that span, I've had to pop up quite a few setbacks on the job, the worst of it being the 250 congestion surcharge, which was put into place five years ago. At that time, myself and several medallion owners braid the cold to hear the Judge Lynn Conner's decision on this, only to have Pat Foy state how much this revenue is needed to assist the MTA's dire finances at the time. Five years later, I have yet to find out where that money has gone or how it helped the system out, which, of course, leads to our current predicament. I cannot believe this surcharge, along with the power mobility tax, the petroleum business tax, the mortgage recording tax, urban taxes, New York City Transportation Assistance Fund, state and local taxes, COVID relief, and tolls collected on MTA bridges and tunnels are still not enough to properly fund mass transit in New York City. But somehow, this congestion pricing plan will finally put all this to an end once and for all. In my home state in New Jersey, Atlantic City casinos were going to solve school funding 40 years ago. That didn't happen. Every state in the country has a state lottery now for schools also, and that still hasn't happened. So where has any of this actually worked? In recent months, my passengers have asked me about this plan and what it's going to cost them. They're fully aware of the proliferation of Uber and Lyft everywhere. That has not only caused excessive traffic, but also will standard gain should this go through. They're also surprised at how many politicians have been in favor of this plan, which only goes to show how out of touch they are with average New Yorkers. You guys want us to get behind this? Make it simple. Stand behind Mayor Adams and make sure that there is no extra surcharge for the yellow cabs. We've been paying enough. My passengers have been paying enough as well. I can also assure you that fair enforcement, a full EIS, and structural labor reforms within the MTA would at least show us that you're really willing, excuse me, to fully get behind congestion pricing.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Michelle Dotton, followed by Juno Chalassong.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Dotton. I'm a rideshare driver and organizer for the Independent Drivers Guild, IDG, an affiliate of the IAMAW. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. FHVs have paid congestion fees since 2019. This tax alone provided the MTA with over $1 billion and climbing. IDG has opposed any additional double taxation and fees paid to directly by FHV drivers or excessive fees borne by our customers requesting an economic hardship on the drivers. Uber and Lyft riders currently pay $2.75. The total congestion tax on rideshare trips will be $5.25. Why is this not mentioned in reflection in any MTA documents? Rideshare trips are assessed an 8.875% state sales tax. A portion dedicated to MTA taxis are not. Why are some leaders and medallion owners advocates continue attacking struggling rideshare drivers? They ask for one segment of our industry to receive exemptions, while FHVs are expected to shoulder an unfair burden and other state taxes. Taxis, green cabs, and liveries are assessed 1.25 congestion tax, on top of a current 2.50 totaling 3.75. Again, no state tax imposed on medallion owners. When passengers are charged an additional surcharge, it will impact rideshare, resulting in thousands of jobs lost and continued economic disaster for FHV drivers' community. 90% immigrant and people of color. Facts in which the MTA own environmental assessment acknowledges. We are one industry and should be treated equally. We are taxed more than taxis, private cars, boxcars, trucks, and construction.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Juno Chalassong, followed by David Kupferberg.
My name is Juno, and I live in the Upper East Side. My high school classmates come from five boroughs, and the one thing that unites us is our struggle with the subway. The issue is, so many students have to wake up at 5:00 or 6:00 a.m. just to get to school. And with the MTA's slow service and delays, it just makes them late as well. We are exhausted. Even when I was 12 years old and I lived in Brooklyn, I would have to get up at 6:00 a.m. in order to get to school in Manhattan. And that's with the Second Avenue subway. Kids a neighborhood over didn't have the Second Avenue subway. So I believe that we need $15 congestion pricing with no delays to improve the subway for all students. I also believe that if the government is going to give credits to anyone, it shouldn't be to encourage people to pollute more in the congestion pricing zone and to cause more allergies and more asthma. You should divert it to a better purpose than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Kupferberg, followed by Josh Curley.
My name is David Kupferberg, Vice President of Bus Advocacy Passengers United, a nonprofit transit advocacy group, Section 501(c)(3) pending. Contrary to a statement made by an advisor at the Traffic Mobility Review Board meeting on August 17, 2023, studies have shown that in New York City, the distance most people are willing to walk to access a local bus route or subway station is a quarter mile, not a half a mile. This is proof that decision-makers do not use transit nor understand what a transit desert is. At the MTA NYCT/Bus Committee meeting on November 29, 2023, the Acting Chief of Operations Planning gave a glowing presentation as to how the subway network would be able to handle the influx of riders. The planners have projected a 2% to 3% increase in ridership. I think it would be 5% to 10%. Yes, the Long Island Railroad, Metro North Railroad, subway, and express bus services may be able to handle the influx of riders if and when congestion pricing goes online. But what about local bus service? This, the MTA constantly and continually refuses to answer. And what about the long-proposed Coast Harbor freight tunnel? The MTA obviously knows that commerce in New York City is mostly done with motor vehicles, not freight trains, and most of those costs have to be passed to the consumer. Based on the aforementioned, I cannot support the Central Business District tolling program. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Joshua Curley, followed by Ashish Kupchodani. Ashish.
Hi, good evening. Oh, good evening. My name is Ashish Kupchodani. I live in downtown Brooklyn, and I commute to the Central Business District five days a week. I'm here today to express my strong support for the proposed tolling schedule and to highlight certain areas in which I believe it falls short. Implementing this schedule will help the city tackle key challenges like alleviating gridlock and reducing emissions, while increasing demand for and directly funding critical public transport projects. Like many other New Yorkers, I look forward to its implementation. However, to ensure its long-term viability, I believe it is imperative to consider annual inflation-linked hikes, like those adopted by the Port Authority for the Lincoln and Holland tunnels. This would help maintain the real value of the incentive it has over time and also minimize the need for sudden larger adjustments in the future, providing stability to both authorities and commuters alike. I also do not believe that the proposed tolling schedule, the proposed charges for single and multi-unit trucks are sufficient. Operators of such trucks, which deliver hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of goods a day, directly benefit from reduced traffic and as such, and also cause substantially more damage on the roadways. For example, a semi causes 10,000 times more damage to a roadway than a car while emitting 16 times as much CO2 on a per-mile basis. This reality is not reflected by the proposed $24 to $36 charge on a single or multi-unit truck when compared to a car's 15. It needs to be much, much higher. Aside from these two shortcomings, I would like to reiterate my endorsement for the proposed tolling schedule. It is a critical first step towards a more efficient, sustainable, and equitable transport system that will benefit this city and its inhabitants for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Josh Levy, followed by Adam Broadheym.
For the opportunity to speak today. As a years-long resident of the CBD who loves walking and doesn't know how to drive, I'm thrilled about congestion pricing. In my neighborhood in Midtown East, honking, gridlock, and especially blocked crosswalks are among the biggest nuisances that I face every day. However, one area that I feel has been overlooked is the Queensborough Bridge. As-is, the plan will lead to some users being charged and others not, based solely on the level of the breaks and exits that they take. This is complicated, confusing, and certain to lead to bizarre traffic patterns on both sides of the bridge. Consistency here is crucial. I believe those exiting on 59th Street should not be automatically charged. A right turn removes you from the CBD within half a block. Instead, those who turn left, the ones actually entering the CBD, should eat the charge. Leaving the pattern as-is will incentivize very rash, last-minute decision-making for drivers who might swerve around and undermine the safety near the bridge that this whole plan otherwise promotes so effectively. Additionally, I do not believe that a flat fee for rideshare makes sense. At night, an Uber into the city meets less congestion and should not be treated the same as one during the morning rush. The answer is not to lower the after-peak fee, it is to raise the peak fee. This enables two things. One, we can lower the fee for yellow cabs. We should do right by them and help them regain the competitive advantage that the medallion process promised them. Also, it will take a much cheaper fee than $2.50 to really drive demand for Ubers down and get them out of the city. Uber promotes congestion pricing. They know that as-is, they're getting a very sweet deal. An Uber is, in some ways, the worst kind of car that can enter the CBD. A trip of convenience will enter, park, do what they're doing, and then leave, whereas an Uber that enters the CBD will drive around in circles all day long, counting, in terms of pollution and obnoxiousness to the rest of us, way more than any other kind of cart would. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Adam Broadheym, followed by Michael Brokum.
Thank you very much. I live in the congestion pricing zone, and when I want to go somewhere, I check Google Maps, and Google Maps first gives me the time to drive, and then they give me the time to take the train. And nine times out of 10, the train is faster than driving. Tonight, driving here would have taken 23 minutes, and the train was supposed to take 18, but it took 17. I timed it. Congestion pricing is amazing because it will make both of these times faster. It'll make taking the train faster, and it will make driving faster. The capital improvements congestion pricing will pay for will allow trains to run more frequently. They will allow my grandmother to use the train station closest to her, which is going to get a new elevator. And when my roommate moves out and we carry his life down from our walk-up and into a U-Haul so that he can live his truth and move to Brooklyn, the drive will be faster because there will be fewer cars. I grew up in this city and can't imagine living anywhere else. I don't get a green MetroCard anymore, but I will be honored when I finally get a yellow one when I'm older. Congestion pricing is not only necessary, but will be transformative for every New Yorker. Thank you for your time. My train is downstairs waiting for taking me. Ah, sorry, I was going to make a joke and say that. My car was waiting, but it's not a car. It's actually an R42, and there are going to be 10 of them. So clearly, I need to get some sleep. I hope you guys get some later tonight as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Brokum, followed by Samantha Liskow.
So I am here, technically speaking, just for myself, but I like the idea of representing many New Yorkers whose love for the city began years before they got the chance to live here. These include people who, as kids, watched movies set in New York City and were fascinated by the subway scenes. It seemed fantastical to be able to get around miles of a glorious city at will while being able to people-watch with abandon. These are people who have chosen to raise their kids here, who are comforted that their children will have the freedom to get to middle school and high school on their own, and that freedom for their children will not depend on teen driving, which is the cause of so many tragedies around the country, as those of us know who hail from the public transit desert that is the rest of this country. So what I mean is that there are a whole lot of us who come to live in New York from around the country and from around the world, expecting that part of the magic of living here will be to get around side by side with others who live here. We don't anticipate or dream of living in a city where people who can afford to get around by car do so often, albeit while frequently idling in traffic, and where many others deal with less-than-ideal bus or train lines who cannot afford any other method of travel. Instead, the promise of New York City for all can be bolstered by the funding from this plan. I will add the sage suggestion given by some, including my representative Senator Bobby Carroll, that the rideshare cost should be raised. And thank you all for spending so much time on this plan. Have a good night.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Yun Choi, followed by Woo Demi Aladin. Woo Demi?
Thank you. I ride the MTA and also drive. Again, it's like the previous speaker says, where is the money going? That's my main concern. And one of the things is the MTA has the bridges and tunnels. And a concern I have is, at what point, you know, do we just limit to that? Because once we give MTA control of the streets, where they can put the toes on the street, that is a dangerous game, because then it's going to start from where we are now. I live in Brooklyn. Flabish Avenue is crazy. Atlantic Avenue is crazy. Is it going to move down to there? So at what point is it you guys are going to be limited and the MTA does not have an off switch? I'm an electrician. Everything has to have an off switch. Once you start making money off of this, I've been living in New York, toes do not go down. MTA fare does not go down. Everything goes up. MTA is the only one that does not apply with gravity. It keeps going up and up. So when you reach your mark, are you going to turn off that switch and say, you know what? We've reached that mark. We've reached the amount that we needed to get. We're going to turn it off. What's going to happen is, in a few years, we need more money. I need more money. I can't go to my boss and just take it out of their account. They have to give me a reason. I have to give them a reason as well why this is justified. And in the MTA, like the previous speaker says, we need transparency. My daughter takes the train. I have a high schooler that takes the train. I take the train early in the morning and go to work, and I'm even saying this train is not safe. My child is on that. I do want you to make it safe. Please do. But give me a reason and show me that you are going to do it, and I will pay it. And the people that say they've been taking the train forever, tax, 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 take everybody's money, that's fine. But guess what? You want me to pay that $15? I will pay it. But guess what? How about we split the difference? You raise the fare. You want me to pay 15 when I'm cutting the cost from Brooklyn Bridge to going to Jersey, $15? I'm not even spending more than 10 minutes to get to the Holland Tunnel, and I still have to pay that. Raise the fare. If everybody's saying, oh, I've been taking the train, it's wonderful. Ride the train at 6:00 a.m. Homeless people are everywhere. Bathrooms are terrible. Do something. Show me where my money is going, and I will, like, everything I've been and doing in New York, I will give it to you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Jose Hernandez, followed by Will Fisher. Jose Hernandez on Zoom. Please allow for a five to six second delay. Here you go.
My name is Jose Hernandez, and I am the President of the New York City Chapter of United Spinal Association, which is committed to advocating for individuals with disabilities. Our transportation advocacy can be traced back to the 1980s. Today, I am here to continue our advocacy and ensure that the MTA remains steadfast in its commitment to accessibility. Of the 472 subway stations in New York City, only 30% are ADA compliant, leaving many individuals with disabilities facing barriers to essential transportation services. I must emphasize the urgency of this situation. There are 20 stations earmarked for accessibility improvements. These projects are unfortunately stalled due to funding constraints. To achieve the MTA's goal of making 95% of the subway stations accessible by 2055, decisive action is needed. One crucial avenue for realizing this vision is through the implementation of congestion pricing. While the MTA has already dedicated billions of dollars to making accessibility enhancements, achieving 95% accessibility would remain challenging without the additional resources congestion pricing would generate. Congestion pricing would contribute significantly to making the subway system truly inclusive and equitable for all. I would also like to commend the MTA for its recent decision to revise the exception qualifications, ensuring they are fair and equitable to those who truly need them. In closing, I urge each of you to consider the voices of those whose daily lives are impacted by the lack of accessibility in our transportation system. Congestion pricing would make accessibility not just a goal, but a reality for all New Yorkers. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Will Fisher, followed by Emily Jacoby. Will Fisher? Emily Jacoby?
Hi, everyone. Thank you for sticking it out late tonight. I'm Emily Jacoby. I am a resident of Brooklyn. I live along Atlantic Avenue, and to see congestion like what I see every day along Atlantic and the dangerous conditions everyone faces, driver, pedestrian, child, elderly person along that road, really brings me here to sort of speak on behalf of my own experience and really resonate with many shared stories tonight. I'm the daughter of a cancer patient who had to commute to get cancer treatment. I am the daughter of someone, of a mother with disabilities, who can't visit me here because the subways aren't adequate for folks who can't get around easily. And I just strongly support congestion pricing, making it a little bit easier every day for people, the majority of New Yorkers who have to take public transit with those experiences to get their basic needs met. That's children, that's parents, that's elderly, that's people with disabilities, who we will all become, because disabilities don't just affect those who have it right now, but we will all age, we will all need support to do so safely in our public way, on our streets, within our subways. Thank you all for sharing how you feel tonight. I resonate with both folks who don't agree with congestion pricing and those who do, and I really appreciate everyone taking their time out to be here tonight.
Please note that public turnout is high tonight, and there may be extended wait times to speak. If you prefer to record your comment on video or in writing, there are members of the MTA Board and executive staff ready to receive your comment. There are also comment cards and a live stenographer. Please see a staff member in the back for instruction on how to record your comment this evening. All recorded comments will be included in the official record, distributed to MTA Board members, and made available on the MTA website and YouTube channel. Our next speaker is Peter Zelbeckis, followed by Jose Gonzalez.
I am Peter Zabelskis. I am a retired university professor. I have been living in the East Village for 46 years. All of my grandparents came to New York around 1900. With about $5 in their pocket, they settled on the east side of Manhattan. It was a land of opportunity. That is why I wanted to settle in the East Village. It's a mecca for creativity, or was, a mecca for creativity, small-scale entrepreneurship, artists, poets, musicians, fashion designers. The East Village is not the Central Business District. The West Village is not the Central Business District. The Lower East Side is not the Central Business District. Chinatown is not the Central Business District. For 100 or more years, these neighborhoods have fostered small-scale creativity in New York's warm embrace, and they are part of the lifeblood that has made this city great. Now, all of that is in danger. You are zoning these neighborhoods for massive inflation and cultural destruction. Every day in the East Village, not just on weekends, I see some traffic, but traffic is not a problem. It's not congestion. Trucks deliver supplies to restaurants. People, well, anyway, I'll go to my disability. I have spinal stenosis. I cannot walk more than 50 feet without pain. I have long had a car in the East Village. I park it on the street. I dutifully move it twice a week for the spooker. I walk down to the car. Like other speakers, I do not use it to drive around Manhattan. I use it to leave and escape.
Thank you for your Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Jose Gonzalez, followed by Kathleen Treat. Jose Gonzalez. Joseph Mastro. Martin Gangurski.
Well, it looks like you finally got a speaker. So, and I promise you, I will not curse. But I mean, some things I have to say may be a little strong. I think I have to warn you on that. You know, you ever try crossing a street coming here from the station at Whitehall Street? You cross those streets with those cars, you're taking your life in your hands. Bad enough coming here, getting off the R train at Whitehall Street, walking in that wind, and then having to duck and dodge cars, some of whom even go against the lights, and they shouldn't be there. Back in the days when Wall Street was still Wall Street, which is where I worked there, we depended mostly on public transportation and still do, even though I'm retired now. But they have literally, literally butchered the downtown subway service on the BMT line. The only train accessible to downtown is the R. They no longer have a train going through the Nassau Street Loop into Southwest Brooklyn anymore. Instead, they have an M train that does a horseshoe run. Instead of going to Southwest Brooklyn like it used to, it goes from Metropolitan Avenue all the way into Sixth Avenue Line and back into Queens. I mean, the E used to do practically the same thing. Then they said, we don't need that. We eliminate this. They just had the E going to Chambers Street. Why should the M have to have the horseshoe run? We really need the trains going downtown. And the Second Avenue subway is a joke. All they want to do is extend it uptown. It should have been a downtown train, including access to Brooklyn. And the B1 bus, forget about it. That bus hardly ever runs, and it takes kids to schools, very different schools, because people have to travel back and forth. They gave them go to schools in their own neighborhood, and we can't provide adequate transportation for them. Congestion pricing is good, but we've got to make sure the money is spent wisely.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you. Our next... Thank you for your comments, sir. Our next speaker is Rachel Sandler on Zoom. Please note for all Zoom speakers, there is about a five to six second delay. So please be ready to put your camera and microphone on, please. Our next speaker is Rachel Sandler. Rachel Sander on Zoom.
Hi there.
Hi.
Thank you for having me. Good evening. My name is Rachel Sander. I'm from the Upper West Side of Manhattan. I'm a lifelong New Yorker, and I'm here to express my support for congestion pricing. I have been using our subway system my entire life. In the past 10 years, I've become increasingly reliant on bike commuting to get around, simply because the subway has become less reliable for me. But now in the bike lanes, I'm facing constant danger because of overcrowded avenues and impatient drivers. Even on foot, there are days when we can't cross the street because of so many cars. I'm here to say that cities are for people and not for cars. Congestion pricing is the best way to serve the largest population. It will lead to cleaner, safer streets and better funding for public transportation so that all New Yorkers can get around our beloved city. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Andrew Rosenthal, followed by Liz Duffy.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I was born in the zone and have lived both inside and outside of the zone most all of my life. I wholeheartedly support congestion pricing. But I'm also a capitalist, and people need to pay for the harm they inflict on others, what economists call externalities. Motorists do not currently pay for the massive harm they inflict on all of New York and its residents and visitors. Cars decrease the quality of life. Cars cause air pollution that creates asthma and other heart ailments. 200 people are killed in traffic violence every year, half of these innocent pedestrians. Congestion pricing will help with all of these things. I also want to speak tonight about exemptions. We've heard very little about it. I believe that there should be no exemptions, especially the police. We've heard many people talk about the safety on the subways. Imagine taking every police officer and police employee and putting them on the subway for a half hour or an hour twice a day, and the extra safety that that will create. That's a win-win, at least as far as I'm concerned. Same for the teachers. I think any exemption will be abused. We've seen this with placards. I think all of you are pretty aware of the placard abuse that is rampant in New York. So I oppose that. I also oppose any of the credits, which defeat the purpose of congestion pricing. Keep it simple. No exemptions. The board here tonight is going to need some courage. I hope that you have it and show it. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Liz Duffy, followed by Lisa Chase. Lisa Chase on Zoom.
Chase, thank you for having me. I'm part of the East Midtown Coalition, and the MTA has done an EIS, which is an environmental assessment study acknowledging that pollution will actually rise in all of the areas surrounding the district. So the climate argument is very, very weak. Additionally, the data proposed for the congestion pricing tax was gathered in 2019. The world is very different now. We need fresh data, and in addition to that, 500,000 people that have left New York City, which reduced the population. What is needed is fresh data, an external MTA audit, not an internal one, and an EIS, the environmental impact statement, that includes consideration of hardships on the economy. This is going to show that Broadway will be decimated, delivery costs will rise, choice of doctor or hospital will no longer be a choice, private car service demand will spike, valuations of properties below 60th Street will decrease, small businesses will close, teachers, firefighters, and firemen, and many other workers will be forced to move out. The MTA already generated this billion dollars, but missed it with the free bus rides during COVID, the subway jumpers who cost $700 million a year, $1.3 billion in overtime each year, and the latest, $2.8 billion wasted on gangway subways that they can't do inspections on so they can't use them. Alternate plans do exist. The stop transfer plan could generate $12 to $14 billion immediately. Or you can implement a millionaire's tax like Mayor de Blasio had suggested. There are other solutions. This program is merely going to shift the pollution and the congestion to other areas outside the zone, and this will hurt businesses, tourists, property owners, and workers. It's going to become a huge deterrent for Manhattan. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Angela Key, followed by Henry Parker. Angela Key on Zoom.
Hello? Hi.
Hi, Angela. Please begin.
Yeah, so I live in the CBD as a resident of Chelsea, and I'm deeply invested in the future of our city and the well-being of its communities. As someone who navigates the challenges of New York City's streets daily, I advocate for the immediate implementation of congestion pricing. New York City faces unprecedented congestion, costing us over $20 billion annually, impacting our health, safety, and the very air we breathe. With congestion pricing, we have a chance to transform our city into a cleaner, safer, and more equitable environment. This isn't just about reducing traffic, it's about making a New York where public transit is a viable and efficient option for everyone, where our emergency services can respond without delay, and where our streets are less congested and more livable. The data is clear, congestion pricing works. It's not just theory. Cities like Singapore, London, Stockholm, and Milan have seen dramatic decreases in car traffic alongside significant improvements in public transit usage and air quality. This policy is not only about improving commutes, but about creating a fairer city where access to clean air and safe, reliable transportation isn't a luxury but a given. To those concerned about the impact on low-income New Yorkers, let's consider the facts. The majority who will benefit from improved transit and reduced pollution are our city's most vulnerable. Those who ride public transit are in need of improvements to make the subway more reliable and usable every single day. In conclusion, as a resident in the CBD, I urge the MTA and our city leaders to implement congestion pricing now without delay or exemptions. Our city's future or health and our planet depend on bold actions like these. Thank you.
Our next speaker before break is Henry Parker on Zoom.
Hello, my name is Henry Parker. I'm a public school student, and I work as a cheese monger in Midtown East. I'm very happy to be speaking here, and I'd like to thank you all for your time. I commute the subway every single day, and I am very, very, very happy to be able to ride it every day, but there are definitely things that can be improved. While I do believe that the tolling could help with that, I also think that it's very expensive. My mom commutes almost every day out of the city, and that will cost over $300 a month on top of the already high living costs in New York City. My doorman downstairs right now also has to pay high costs coming in and even going out. So I feel like we just have to find better ways to toll. Also, I do believe that there are safety issues when it comes to cars driving in and out of the city. Yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you. We are going to take a five-minute break. At this time, we ask members of the public, and you're encouraged to visit the information tables outside of the hearing room. If you are registered to speak live but prefer not to wait, you may record your testimony in the lobby area. Please see a staff member for further instructions on how to provide your comment. All recorded comments will be included in the official record, distributed to MTA Board members, and made available on the MTA website and YouTube channel. The time is 9:22. We will resume at 9:27 promptly. Thank you.
Exactly.
The time is now 9:32 and we are restarting our hearing. Our next speaker is Matthew Carter on Zoom. Matthew Carter. Matthew Carter on Zoom. Our next speaker is Danielle Avasar on Zoom. Danielle Avasar. Our next speaker is Iman Remawi Doster on Zoom. Iman Remawi Doster. Our next speaker is Pana Giades Sakoulis. On Zoom. Pana Giades Sakoulis. On Zoom. Our next speaker is Shamina Lavangia on Zoom. Shamina Lavangia. On Zoom. Hi Shamina.
Yes, good evening. My, 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 my name is Shamina Lavangia. I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I support the introduction of congestion pricing wholeheartedly. I live in Midtown Manhattan. There is a constant buzz of noise and pollution and also unsafe to walk no matter what time of day.
Shamina, can you pause for one second? We're having some issues with feedback. IT team, can you? Okay Shamina, you can try to speak again.
Should I start from the beginning?
You can start from the beginning. We're just having a lot of echo and feedback from your audio. If you have another device that's on like another like on your phone or if you're on your laptop, maybe turn one of them off.
Can you, can you put me in the next queue because I want to fix my audio meanwhile?
All right, there we go. I think that's it.
It might take longer.
No, you're good.
Okay, let me try now. Let me try. I think it has fixed.
Perfect. Keep going.
Sorry about that. Good evening. My name is Shamina Lavangia again. I thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak today. I support the introduction of congestion pricing wholeheartedly without any delays and exemption. I live in Midtown Manhattan in Hell's Kitchen. There is a constant buzz of traffic noise and pollution and also unsafe to walk no matter what time of day or night. I lived in Long Island in the 90s and I commuted by public transport daily to from there to Midtown, to Lower Manhattan where I worked. The commute was long. It was almost two hours, but on the days that we decided to bring the kids to work sometimes for Christmas or Thanksgiving, it was longer than that. It used to be two and a half hours long, very stressful. I have also lived in London and Singapore where congestion pricing was introduced almost 20, 25 years ago. I have personally seen a reduction in traffic pollution and congestion. I don't know why Manhattan has not been at the forefront of this initiative. I sincerely wish that we take action on this as soon as possible and make all our lives easier to live in this wonderful city. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amanda Levine on Zoom. Amanda Levine.
Hi, I'm here, I'm here, I'm here.
Great.
A second. I'm ready to go. I know you're all tired and I'm beyond at that point as well. But this affects my personal life, my dad's life. My name is Amanda Levine. I'm a true and longtime Manhattanite who is your quintessential working class citizen who lives paycheck to paycheck when I get a paycheck that owns and relies on my car in New York City. I was born and raised in Manhattan. I still live here in the West Hundreds. Besides the glory fact that it is complete travesty and I feel kind of criminal to charge Manhattan residents to drive their own cars around in our city, but that's the least of my issues. My dad, who is now 80 years old, still lives in Manhattan and currently resides in the heart of the central business district in fixed income housing. I am my dad's keeper. I am fully involved in his day to day happenings and with his worsening ailments, some from 9/11, some from just getting old, some from stage five kidney disease and more. I'm in charge of driving him to and from most, if not all of his doctors and medical appointments, among a lot of other things I do for him. I've had a car in the city since I was 17 as my own anxiety issues do not, I do not take mass transit. I park on city streets, not garages, and I can't afford any of that. And I do alternate side of the street parking like a lot of us do, seemingly to surprise of some of you who have spoken here. I use my car to drive from the West 100s to my dad's and then to whatever appointments he has, wherever those may be. He cannot take mass transit, no trains, no buses. It's just me and I'm happy to do all of this for him. Beyond driving anywhere I want in this city, one of my main priorities is caring for him. Driving him to and from the medical appointments as I mentioned above, shopping and delivering groceries, food in general, cooking and cleaning his house and everything in between. With the approved congestion charts being put into place, there is no way I will be able to, I can or will be able to afford to pay any amount to drive him sorry everywhere and anywhere he needs to go and to get to his apartment when I need to. We both have immense concern, anxiety and sheer panic over the congestion charge. I need to take care of my dad. He needs me to take care of him. I'm the only person he has and I love him more than life itself. I am not, I need to be able to take my car.
For your comment. Thank you. Our next speaker is Joan Kagan followed by Audrey Parker. Our next speaker is Joan Kagan followed by Audrey Parker.
Hi.
Hi Joan, you can begin.
Hi, my name is Joan Kagan. I'm a 33 year resident of the Upper Side. If I lived in northern New Jersey, Westchester, Connecticut or Long Island and I were driving into the city, to avoid congestion pricing, I would drive, I would park on the Upper East Side or the Upper West Side and take the subway to Midtown. We're hearing a lot about the carbon impact of cars, but we're not hearing anything about the alternative transportation to cars. I'm concerned about the impact of congestion pricing on these neighborhoods. I'm concerned that there will be an increase of traffic and demand on parking on the Upper East Side and West, and Upper West Side. These neighborhoods already have avenues that become single lanes because there is so much double, so many cars being double parked and trucks being double parked and there's restaurants, sheds are creating more issues for limiting the streets.
Audrey, you might want to turn.
Drivers in these neighborhoods.
Audrey, you might want to turn your video off.
Concerned that we're. Hello?
Hi, you're stuck. You might want to turn your video off and just go on audio.
Oh, sure. Sure. I'm also concerned that about what the MTA is doing to crack down on fare beaters. I don't ride this, I don't ride the subway without seeing people jump the turnstile. If people are riding the subway, they need to be paying for it and we need to be cracking down on that as well. And I'm also concerned about what we're going to be doing to increase and improve the public transportation for people commuting into the.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Jason Anthony followed by Clayton Lane. Our next speaker is Jason Anthony followed by Clayton Love.
Hi, it's Audrey.
Lucille, I'm actually here.
Hi Jason.
Jason Anthony here, a member of the Low and Rural AD Task Force. Congestion pricing should be implemented without delays because there are so many lawsuits going on right now that will delay so many projects that the MTA are having right now such as accessibility, new cars, station modernizations, CBTC, you guys name it. When I'm in the central business district on 14th Street, 23rd Street, 34th Street, 42nd Street, 52nd, 57th Street, 59th Street and 60th Street, what I see, traffic. And congestion pricing will reduce traffic. And we should have more folks taking the subway. And one of the things that we are starting to see is security cameras inside subway cars. And without congestion pricing, we won't have nothing that I mentioned previously. So let's implement congestion pricing as soon as possible. Thank you Lucille for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Audrey Parker followed by Clayton Lane. Audrey Parker followed by Clayton Lane.
Hey, hello?
Hi Audrey, we can hear you.
Hi, great. So I'm not on the video though, right? Okay, so I just want to say that I'm strongly opposed to congestion pricing. And I was kind of taken back by how people were saying that exemptions including for the disabled, fearing that they will abuse the privilege. Being disabled is not a privilege and shame on you. I hope none of you will ever become disabled. Driving is not a luxury for me. I use my car to leave the city. My brother and myself are disabled. I don't drive in the zone, but I, I live in the zone and I go to appointments in Long Island. I'm disabled, a low income senior, a New York City resident. I've been living in the city since 1979. And someone said that they will not recognize blue hanging tags. My doctor attested to my disability and my brother's disability. And all states recognize this tag. It's imperative that you recognize this tag. You know, they're looking for money. This is just another tax. We pay New York City tax, city, you know, state taxes, sales taxes, taxes on my phone and bus and train fares. And before you proceed with this new proposed tax, you must settle the numerous lawsuits. I understand that more lawsuits are coming. Congestion pricing should not go forward. London's congestion pricing is not successful. However, the residents received a 90% discount. I grew up in the Rockaways. Told in our ways for the Rockaway residents, we should follow that example. I cannot afford the proposed tax. I really need my car. When did New York City residents ever have to contribute to pay for major subway and bus improvements? Never.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Clayton Lane followed by Michael Sullivan. Clayton Lane followed by Michael Sullivan.
Hello, good evening. My name is Clayton Lane. I'm a resident of Hudson County, New Jersey and the former CEO of the Institute for Transportation and Development Policy. As a New Jersey resident, I enthusiastically support the MTA's congestion pricing plan with no further delay or exemptions. Congestion pricing is a historic opportunity for New Jersey communities to improve our public transit and job access and reduce congestion and pollution. I work in Manhattan and during rush hour, I take transit like 92% of New Jersey commuters into Manhattan CBD. And once we're in the city, we depend on excellent transit connections in Manhattan to access jobs worth $35 billion in economic activity for New Jersey. Investing in transit is critical to our economic future. I also want to illustrate what it's like on our side of the river. Congestion backs up for miles past where I live from the Lincoln and Hudson tunnels, spewing noxious soot into neighboring black and brown communities that live along those approaches and suffer from asthma rates four times as high as white residents in my county. Buses also from Hudson County run every few seconds through the Lincoln Tunnel. They must sit through bumper to bumper congestion. And even within New Jersey, it's often hard to access my own home or local businesses as we sit in that congestion, even if we don't cross the river. I applaud MTA's courage and wisdom. I thank you from the bottom of my heart. I encourage New Jersey Governors, Governor Phil Murphy, Senators Booker and Menendez to boldly support this historic measure that will benefit the vast majority of New Jersey commuters. Congestion pricing is a historic opportunity to secure northern New Jersey's health, environments and economic future. Let's make it happen.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Michael Sullivan followed by Patrick Condren. Michael Sullivan followed by Patrick Condren. Michael Sullivan, followed by Patrick Condren. Michael, you can begin.
Hi, my name is Michael Sullivan. I'm a Brooklyn resident and I support congestion pricing and increased investment in public transit. Buses and trains are the bloodline of the city, not roads. Buses and trains should be prioritized along with pedestrian safety. Improved public transit is important to me. When I think about my two-hour commute in college from Sheep's Head Bay to Bedford Park Boulevard to attend Lehman College, public transit made it possible for me. And I could even do my homework on the train. You can't do your homework driving. At least you shouldn't. When the train was moving at good speed, I also got to see the best piece of public art in the city, Mash Transoscope. Congestion pricing will give us faster, more accessible transit that's more reliable for everyone, including students. It will give us less traffic and safer streets. Congestion pricing and transit investment will make NYC as great as we know it can be for all New Yorkers from all boroughs and backgrounds. Thank you, all is love.
Our next speaker is Patrick Condren, followed by Billy Cohen. Our next speaker is Patrick Condren, followed by Billy Cohen.
There we go. My apologies. Good evening. I'm Patrick Condren of the Bus Association of New York Board Member and Bus for NYC Coalition. Private bus operators here in the New York area, which include West Point Trailways, Academy Bus, Hampton Jitney and many other private carriers who belong to the ABA and UMA National and Regional Associations. Bus companies support efforts for congestion mitigation in New York City and elsewhere. And we note that the TMRB recommends that transit and commuter buses, whether owned by a government entity or a company, should be exempted from the CB tolls. We agree. Commuter buses are accessible to the general public, follow a fixed route with limited stops, many operate 365 days a year and not necessarily under contract. A category relevant, not relevant to the serving of public and the riding public under the guidelines of US DOT and the New York State DOT. Therefore, we respectfully request that the reference to with government contract be omitted and replaced with reference to compliance with US DOT and New York State DOT rules and regulations per the definition of a commuter bus company, many of whom are subject to the Public Transportation Safety Board and other strict compliance issues for the benefit of the riding public. Commuter buses are clearly part of the regional transportation systems as defined by metropolitan planning organizations across the country. Fixed route, published frequent service, open to the public should be exempt as they are around cities around the world. All buses carrying the public, regardless of where they're going, are part of the solution, not part of the problem. It may be helpful also to define a bus as a large bus with a minimum of passengers. As all buses, large buses contribute to mitigating congestion with passengers not in an automobile. We thank you. Large buses may include charters, airports, minimize the use of automobiles.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Billy Cohen, followed by Keisha Smith. Our next speaker is Billy Cohen, followed by Keisha Smith. Billy Cohen, followed by Keisha Smith. Our next speaker is Keisha Smith, followed by Basia Osowski. Keisha Smith, followed by Basia Osowski.
Hello?
Hi, good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Keisha Smith and I live in Queens, New York. I drive to work every day in the Upper East Side of Manhattan. And what I've noticed for the last couple of weeks is that the cameras are facing the Upper East Side going uptown, which makes no sense to me. If the congestion pricing is to control congestion in the Central Business District, as you guys call it, I don't understand why there are cameras facing Upper East Side on First Avenue. Same thing on York Avenue. If I am going to go home on the Queens Bridge, which is the only bridge that we have coming to and from Queens, New York for free, if I am coming off the bridge to go to work on 71st Street, I'm going to be paying. If I am going home from 71st Street, going to the only free bridge that we have, I'm going to be paying. I don't understand why you guys are calling this something to control traffic downtown for pollution and congestion and you're charging people to go to and from the Queens Bridge in the Upper East Side of Manhattan. None of it makes any sense. I am hoping that someone would look at that because, first of all, I consider that a scam. People that stand there and say that it's a luxury or a privilege to drive, it's nonsense. I've lived in New York City my whole life. I'm born and raised here. I do not take the trains and the subways to work anymore because they are dirty, they're disgusting, they are tiresome. That is just something that I choose to do, but I pay a lot of money to park there. So it's not no freebie and I have to take, what's the word? I have to make exceptions in my life in order to drive to and from work also. So for someone to stand there and say it's not a privilege, it's a choice we make, but why are we standing here paying for something that's, and then the rides here cars and the taxis are about
Thank you for your comment. Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Basia Osowski, followed by Tracy Anunciado. Basia Osowski, followed by Tracy Anunciado. Tracy Anunciado, followed by John Daniels. John Daniels. Kurt Woods is our next speaker. Kurt Woods. We're going to pause for one second. The next speaker is Kurt Woods. Kurt Woods. The next speaker is Fan Ying Jen. Our final speaker is Laron D. And with that, we would like to thank all members of the public for joining us this evening. For details about our remaining hearings, please visit the project website at congestionreliefzone.mta.info or call the public meeting hotline at 646-252-6777. As a final reminder, in addition to the virtual public hearings, there are several other ways you can provide comments on the proposed toll rate schedule through March 11, 2024. We encourage the public to comment via the CBD TP website, congestionreliefzone.mta.info. You can also email comments to CBDTP.feedback@mtabt.org. Send them via mail to CBD tolling program to Broadway, 23rd floor, New York, New York 10004 or by calling 646-252-7440. The time is now 10:00 PM. This concludes our hearing. Thank you again for your participation.